I now call to order the budget work session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Monday, August twelfth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Van, oh Vice Mayor Terrapini.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Well, good evening everyone, and I'd like to remind to everyone that the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues together and analyze information to clarify questions. No notes, no votes were conducted during the work session. No public comments will be allowed tonight on the budget, however, it will be allowed during the two public hearings that we have scheduled for Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand nineteen, and Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty P M. At the less budget work session, which was on July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, we discussed the general fund and the enterprise funds. Well, tonight, we'll be discussing the C I P budget, the C R E budget, salaries, and classification plan, and any follow-ups that we have from July sixteenth work session. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Licorice and Ron for the presentation.
Yes, again, like the last one, each of these areas, we'll start off with a short presentation from Ron Herring and then go into each item. Ron?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner is Ron Herring, Finance Director. As a mayor said, this is the second budget work session, and the first item is C I P capital outlay, and I'll just go through my presentation here. This slide was on one of your other slides from the first budget work session, but it's just trying to tell you that in the back of the executive summary, highlighted there, pages ninety-eight to one hundred, is a really, is a good summary of all the C I P programs in the two thousand twenty budget. And highlighted in the bottom is the capital outlay, pages on one fifteen to one sixteen, where it has all the capital outlay. And then, in case you, I, I gave you all handouts there. In case you can't see the presentation or you're having trouble with the book here, I saw you got presentation, I got copies of the presentations for all you there in case you need it. The proposed budget for two thousand twenty for the C I P is eleven point two million. The projected budget for the five-year program for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four is thirty-four point five million. And the C I P is based on larger projects and the funds that are involved. Capital outlay is mostly for the smaller equipment, over a thousand dollars in life, in excess of two years. The total capital outlay is eight hundred and forty-five thousand, two twenty-one. And just a slide graphically to show for fiscal year two thousand twenty, that eleven point two million of the C I P program is broken out to physical environment, nine point four million. That's mostly funded by the water and sewer and stormwater funds. The balanced public safety, culture, recreation, transportation, as funded by the penny fund. This slide is showing the five-year C I P, the thirty-four point five million. Like I say, the majority is physical environment, the twenty-seven million funded by water and sewer and stormwater funds. The balanced public safety, culture, recreation, transportation is mostly funded by the penny fund. And trying to go to those pages eighty-nine, they're in your executive summary. This, these slides are going to list all those projects out there, starting by public safety. And we got police vehicles, four hundred and eight thousand, fire staff vehicle, sixty thousand, public safety building gates, thirty thousand, ladder truck lease payment, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, for total public safety of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-five. Transportation-related projects, brick street and road reconstruction, three hundred and fifty thousand, sponge dock seawall engineering, a hundred and fifty thousand, hibiscus road stormwater improvement, a hundred and twenty thousand. Extend Pennell's Trail at North Anclot, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three oh nine, for total transportation of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, three oh nine. Continuing on, we got culture and recreation, the exercise park, two pickleball courts, two shuffleboard courts, for a total of ninety thousand between the two. Recreation center, we've got roof replacement, restroom, entryway, and new floor, for a total of thirty thousand. Community center roof and windows for fifty thousand, for a total cultural recreation of a hundred and seventy thousand. And then getting into physical environment, we've got stormwater, the big pent gross stormwater project, almost three point two million, and as notated below, the Swift Mud grant funding, an amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred, will help cover that project. More physical environment, water and sewer reclaimed, we got Seabreeze Drive Construction, one point four million, future well water wells, one point four million, Beckett Bridge Utilities, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, and then we got the water pipe valve replacement program, four hundred and fifty thousand. Water plant improvements, three hundred thousand, water supply well fields, seventy-five thousand, water distribution improvements, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Meter repair changeouts, hundred and twenty-five thousand, G I S improvements, hundred thousand, sewage collection improvements, four hundred thousand, sewage treatment plant improvements, three hundred and fifty thousand, sewage lift station improvements, hundred, two hundred and sixty thousand, and Oakleaf Village reclaimed engineering, a hundred and fifty thousand. Their total water sewer reclaimed, a six point two million, total physical environment, a nine point four million, and then total capital improvement projects for two thousand twenty, eleven million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five fifty. And then getting into the capital outlay, which is the smaller items, we got it sorted by general fund and then by department. So we got I T, eighty-four thousand, I T theater items, twenty-four thousand. Planning, about forty-five hundred, police, about seventy-one thousand, fire, twenty-two thousand. Recreation, five thousand, library, eighty-four hundred. Roads and streets, twenty-eight hundred, for total general fund, that's coming out of unassigned fund balance, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then we got items coming out of restricted funds, cemetery perpetual care, we've got seventy-six thousand from the library donations, we got twelve thousand for a total coming out of restricted general funds, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred. For a total general fund, capital outlay of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven twenty-one. Going on to the special revenue fund, we've got SWAT equipment, ten thousand, public art projects to be determined, hundred thousand, future approved land purchase, forty-eight thousand. For total special revenue funds, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, sorry. Sanitation fund, we've got solid waste for sanitation, total of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And then getting into water and sewer, we got I T G I S, fifteen thousand. Collection Center, we had, well, we had ten thousand, but we bought the micro, the scanner this year, so we're taking that out of the budget. Meter repair maintenance, boom truck, eighty-five thousand. For total water and sewer fund, a hundred and ten thousand, and then we get to the golf course fund, thirty-five hundred for beverage cooler, and then total enterprise fund total is two hundred and sixty-four thousand for the grand total of capital outlay of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, two twenty-one. And then we got some stuff that's in the general fund, that was cut from the general fund. We have the building development, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We had police, we had twenty-four thousand. And I won't go through all the items there. And facility maintenance, we had two hundred and seventy-four thousand of items cut, cut out of the budget. Recreation, we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand total cut out. Parks, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred, roads and streets, eighty-five thousand for, and total capital request cut from the general fund budget of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred. And that's basically the end. I just put the timetable on the dates for the rest of the year here. So I'm opening up for discussion.
One thing I want to say, and again, I'm going to try to let other people do the talking because I don't know how long my voice is going to last, but there's two sheets of paper here that are separate, to keep by your left-hand side, the proposed budget general fund and the proposed budget items unfunded. These are important as we go through most of the night. The one page is that money that I said that you have, that hasn't been allocated, that your individual projects can be used. The other one is the things that are not funded. So when you bring up, when you bring up things that you want to add to the budget, we just want to make sure you looked at those things was unfunded to make sure there's not anything on that list. They may have a priority when you do it. So I just want to tell you to keep those aside. We did those separates because that's kind of the worksheet tonight as we start adding and subtracting to the budget. Those are too important. They're two singular pieces of paper. One is two pages and one as one should be on your dais. Just keep, keep those as they do the presentations because we will be using those throughout the night as we talk about things we may want to add or may want to delete to the budget and how much money we have to put additional things that this commission may want to put in there.
Okay, thank you. Ron, thank you very much, and I want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication. But if we take a moment, I'd like to invite to the podium the Chairman of the Budget Advisory Committee and to give us any comments and recommendations that the board might have.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. We did, we did one, we did one, 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 one of, one of the resolutions that we did was to support the, 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 the current overtime for the, for the, for the, for the police and fire departments. We, we looked at past budgets, we had adjustments for inflation, and we believe that, that it's in keeping. And we don't think that necessarily hiring new personnel would cure all those concerns as a lot of that is special events that we have also with SWAT and Cops for Kids. And we also agree with the, with, with, with the, with the chief's mission that we hire more personnel to fulfill his mission. So we think that the current overtime is in keeping with the, you know, with the budget and it, and it's affordable. I, I wasn't there for the fire portion of it, but I, 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 I would support the, 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 the same for that. We also discussed the, the, the C I P budget, you know, as it relates to police. And we feel that with the current age of vehicles that are, that are, that are, that are, that are, that are being replaced, that it's worthwhile to go ahead and use those funds that, 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 that he has requested, you know, you know, you know, for that. Because delaying that would just, would, would just cost more in the long run. So that was, that was the only, you know, you know, resolution that we had specifically was for the overtime. And then they did, and then the discussion on, on, on the C I P for the, you know, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the police vehicles.
Thank you for the recommendations. As a matter of fact, that's one of the follow-ups that we've had.
Sure.
That's the overtime for fire and police department. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anything else that you have to share with us?
Uh, no, we've, you know, reviewed all parts of the budget by now. We did, we did review the sidewalk improvement fund. There wasn't a, a resolution from it, but I, I serve on two boards, and I think one board's going one way and the other's going the, the, though, though, the other way. But this board that, that I chair, there was a consensus, at least I guess, that they are in support of the sidewalk improvement fund, you know, you know, as is now.
Because it is now.
Yeah, I think charter might have something different, but I, I, I don't, I don't chair that board, so I won't speak for that, so.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCloy is here too. Do you have anything that you want to share with us?
You want to come up here and talk?
You want to?
Yeah, come, yeah, come up here and talk.
Mr. McCloy is on the Budget Advisory Committee as well.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure to be on that board. And coming from the corporate environment, as soon as I saw a big overtime number, I thought, let's go for it. I, I believe, this is Chief of Police presenting tonight. He did a crystal clear explanation of it, and I walked away. This is, this is being managed well. So I hope you, I know he'll do a good job tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to be on the board.
Thank you. I had the same concern when I saw the numbers too, because it looks so different than you used to have on the, on the corporate world. But the nature of the business is so different.
We have, we have our vice chair, I'm, 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 I'm as well here today, but, but she says that, that she's good, so.
Who, who is the?
We have one car that has a hundred twenty-five thousand miles on it. Another one well over a hundred thousand miles on it. And then what we look at is we look at cost of maintenance. So we have some vehicles that we need to replace out because it's just starting to cost us a lot of money in maintenance. So to delay this, you've got to remember, when we order the cars, it still takes six months to get in and get on the road. So you'll put me behind two years in a fleet that needs to be replenished like that to keep on, you know, keep these vehicles going, keep them going for seven, eight years. You know, we get a lot of longevity out of these cars. And in the long run, you have a modern fleet that saves money. So, you know, to, to take away these vehicles this year would be hurting the plan and you'd never, you'd never make it up.
Thank you.
I've got a question on this, Mayor.
Sure.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Um, so Chief, how many vehicles are being replaced this year?
Um, seven or eight.
Seven or eight? So just for simple math purposes, you divide seven or eight into the four hundred and eight thousand?
Yeah, it's seven. Uh, we have seven vehicles. Well, it's not really, um, because what you have to look at, like Tahos, all the police equipment, so you've got cages, you've got a lot of ancillary equipment, as opposed to some of the unmarked cars that are not as expensive because you don't have all that equipment to outfit them.
Right. So if we do this annually, seven or eight cars, how many, uh, vehicles do you think are in the fleet total? I'm just, what I'm trying to get at is I'm trying to figure out if, if there's a way that we don't have to budget four hundred thousand dollars a year, every year, for vehicle replacement. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, numbers wise, how that works.
Well, it's either we, it's either we spend more in maintenance and fall behind in the fleet by not doing this, or we do this and we keep the fleet going, we keep the vehicles modern, we keep less maintenance dollars going, we keep vehicles from getting old. Because you've got to remember, I've got vehicles coming up behind this that are seven, eight years old. And that's a long time. We used to get a year and a half out of vehicles. So if you ever went back to an old plan where you're running vehicles that last you, you know, on patrol, if you're running a vehicle twenty-four, seven, you get a year and a half out of it. When the vehicles get assigned, we're getting seven years out of them. So to fall behind in this plan, in my opinion, is not wise.
So how many total vehicles?
About, right around fifty-five, marked, right around fifty-five, somewhere in that area.
Seven or eight a year, or seventy a year, and fifty-five, what, like almost eight, eight years? Is that right? And you feel that the replacement versus the additional maintenance is definitely the way to go?
Well, absolutely. The way you run this fleet is called the hybrid Indian plan. You see the SOs doing it, a lot of cities are doing it now. This is the most cost effective, cost effective way to staff your police department with a modern fleet. High water vehicles, vehicles that MEGAR needs, vehicles that, you know, especially the Tahos, they're phenomenal police vehicles. The maintenance on these things is not near what it was on the Chargers. So.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody has a question? Thank you, Chief. Our Chief Young, would you please come forward?
Thank you, sir.
On page six, uh, item number two says fire stuff vehicle. What do you mean by fire stuff? Fire, stuff, staff vehicles?
That, that's replacing one of our oldest staff vehicles that we have in our fleet. It's a two thousand eight Explorer. It's got about a hundred and fifty thousand miles or so on it.
It's just sixty thousand dollars. Is that including, uh, uh, the equipment that it goes with that or?
There's not really any equipment. It's just a staff vehicle to get the, uh, staff around, our, our fire inspectors around town. And it just replaces our oldest vehicle in our fleet. We usually just try to do one a year to keep it rotating, same concept, just at a lot less of a impact.
And of course, uh, we've got two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars for the, uh, for the ladder truck.
That's correct.
Already been discussed and already been approved.
Yeah, I think the first payment probably be around March, April first in that area, when the truck's delivered. A month after the truck is delivered, we make the first payment on that.
Did we place the work order already on there?
Yes, that's ordered.
Voted you.
It's ordered.
That's all voted set.
It's ordered.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. Thank you. Any, I'm sorry, anybody has a question?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. Uh, you touched on this, I remember, last year about replacing fire vehicles for the staff, uh, every year or so. Um, about sixty thousand for the deputy chief or chief's vehicle or, um, and you kind of touched on this one just briefly. So this vehicle that's being replaced this year really has no outfit to it. It's just more for, um...
Yeah, it just comes with the standard light package on it and stuff. We don't put any additional equipment in it, uh, except for the computer, which we already have. So we don't have to do like any tools or anything like that for this vehicle.
Okay. So for this one, why would we need a, a Tahoe? Like, couldn't we go with a Ford Explorer, or I'm sorry, a Ford Ranger, or a smaller, um, heavy truck for this position and not spend the sixty thousand on it?
This, this vehicle comes with the police package that we've been going with. The same reason that Chief Cochran mentioned, we're getting, uh, a good quality car this way and it fits the needs of the department. Uh, the smaller cars, I don't believe, have the police package that we look for. So that's why we kind of are looking at this. We may try to do something, uh, a little different once we get closer to ordering it. But we're looking at that option now.
So don't take this the wrong way, please.
No.
Um, I mean, why couldn't you drive a Prius if this is just someone driving around to look at? Um, and you've got zero gas usage on it, you've just driving around the businesses, making sure inspections are good, not going off-road and with it for any fires or anything along those lines. So, um, in that aspect, I think that would almost be more prudent in this type of position, although it's not as cool of a vehicle to drive. Um, but I think it's more prudent on how you spend your money because we're also, I mean, as the commission has shown in the past, there's really been no, nothing held back for the fire department for vehicles and things along those lines. But if it's a vehicle that doesn't really need to be used as a fire vehicle, it's more of a transportation vehicle, and then some, uh, you could use it as calls occasionally to, to drive to the call or whatever it may be, right? But you're not actually using it for the call. Um, I don't, I don't see the need for, um, a tricked out Tahoe.
The other thing you have to think about though, our vehicles are also used for emergency management. So a Prius is not going to do very well during a hurricane when we have to get around town to get through things. Either some high water, over debris and stuff like that. I'm afraid the Prius probably wouldn't last very long. So that's kind of why we go with the Tahoe.
But you didn't bring it up, so that's why I said.
I'm sorry.
What they're trying to get is why, why are you doing this vehicle? Not, again, we could take a golf cart and go around and do things.
We could do it for that fact, but I think we...
They're not just administrative vehicles. You need to let the commission know the...
They multi-purpose for us, emergency management, they can get through some higher water and things like that. So that's why we kind of go with this Tahoe.
Okay, that's fair.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Thanks.
Thank you. My next question is on the transportation. Brick Street reconstruction, I guess that would be Tom, right?
Well, I think, let, Ron can explain because this is something you've had in the budget and done for as long as I can remember.
Well, it's, it's part of our annual program of the Brick Street and Road Reconstruction. Part of the money is funded out of the penny fund, the other part is funded out of the capital project fund. And this year, like I say, it totals three hundred and fifty thousand for the Brick Street and Road Reconstruction program.
Okay. Are we doing Brick Street this year? Are we doing, are we doing the, the paving this year? What do we do?
This is Brick, isn't this the Brick Street?
Yes.
It is, okay. And of course, uh, Mr. Coors, you're going to provide the priority list, right?
Yeah.
So I thank you for that. Any questions, anybody?
Uh, not on that directly, but I have something on transportation.
Of course, go ahead.
Uh, first, Ron, just to go back a couple of steps in terms of the vehicles and stuff. And I know that this is a question that gets asked probably every year as it relates to not only the sale of police vehicles, but other equipment that we, you know, no longer have a need for and then wholesale out. Can you just give a brief explanation as to, you know, when the seven or eight police vehicles are sold that we're replacing, where that money then goes?
Yeah, yes, they're sold at auction and they go back into the fund that they were purchased from. Most of the police and fire will go back into the general fund. Uh, if they're water and sewer vehicles, they'll go back into the water and sewer fund.
Right. And then something else that's been asked, uh, in the past is for the commission to, uh, possibly see some form of a, a sale list or, uh, excuse me, a sale list when we sit, when we have these, like during budget cycle, like for two thousand nineteen, how much money did we recoup in vehicles that we sold or equipment that we sold or generators or whatever, the heavy equipment? I think that's productive for, for us to see as we sit up here and say, okay, we're going to spend this every year and we're going to spend this every year. And where does the money go on the vehicles or the equipment that's replaced? I know we ask that every year, but it would also be nice to know exactly how much money we're getting back and then how much is being contributed back into the general fund.
Yes, we have a list on that and we could provide that for you.
That'd be great. I think that would be helpful for all. Um, and then on the transportation side of the proposed CIP, the Hibiscus Road and Stormwater Improvement, um, I went into the page one oh nine of the executive summary for the, uh, penny fund. And I guess I'm curious why we're spending that money out of the penny fund and why we're not spending it out of like the roadway or, or the water and sewer fund?
Uh, or the stormwater fund or?
Yeah.
Well, for one, the stormwater fund is pretty much the Penn Gross Project is taking a good part of all the, the, the funding available, that would be available for that project. So that's why we've moved it to the, uh, penny fund for that. If there is any water portion, we could charge it, but I don't know if there is any water and sewer portion and...
It says, uh, stormwater.
Yeah, that would be the stormwater fund, but like I say, the, we're using most of that money for the Penn Gross Project.
And then can you direct my attention to that? I know I saw it in here, the Penn Gross Project and the, that particular, uh...
Are you looking for which page it's on or?
Well, yeah, somewhere where I can see what kind of money is left in that stormwater account. I had it in front of me. What is it, one twelve? So the, the grant...
Page one twelve has a stormwater fund.
The grant, the SWF mod grant for the Penn Gross is coming back at one point three and change, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not money we're spending though?
No, that's money that's going to offset the Penn Gross Project.
Right, so why are we budgeting for that as an expense and not as a, like a credit, I guess?
Well, with the expense on that page one twelve is what's coming out of the stormwater fund is a two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred. Up, up above is the revenue that's coming in to offset that.
Above is the revenue coming in to offset? The, the two, the almost three million in revenue, right?
Correct. With the stormwater fees that are coming in, the one million, six hundred and sixteen thousand and right below that, it's, it's the grant, the one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
And the SWF mod grant is money that's coming back to the city though, correct?
Correct.
So we spend it first and then it comes back?
Correct, reimbursement.
So when do, when do you project we get reimbursed?
Uh, as soon as they get the, all the, finalled up, uh, I would say it takes about a month, two months to get it back.
Hmm, so then that money would be, would go back and, and the ending working capital would be plus a million, three and change?
Correct, going back into the stormwater fund.
Right, so, so if that happens, a coup, that happens after the completion, we get reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay, so that probably wouldn't be until whenever that project's completed, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So what I'm, basically what I'm trying to get at is I just don't, I don't like having to spend penny money for projects or work that there's other avenues for us to, uh, fund those types of projects. So that's why I asked about the Hibiscus, uh, Road and Stormwater Improvement. I mean, ideally, if it's me, I'd like to try and find, and could you elaborate on that project a little bit, or somebody?
Uh, probably I might have to get Tom to elaborate on that one.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, that's a, a project that actually sits in the intersection of Hibiscus and Pine Street. There's a conflict with, uh, some, uh, water, uh, I'm sorry, uh, sanitary sewer. Uh, we found out over time at that line, it actually, the roadway on Hibiscus floods right behind the, the Greek Center. We found that this area where there was a blockage, a pipe that actually went through the stormwater system, uh, was interfering with those flows. Uh, so we're going to replace, we're going to put a conflict box inside the in- intersection. At the same time, we're going to rebuild part of Hibiscus Street. It's all part of that same project.
So let's just say from, if you're saying behind the Greek church, I mean, behind the community center.
Yeah, there's a, there's a low section, if you've been here, you've seen the storm. Well, it has a tendency to flood, I think, I think you've probably seen it a hundred times.
Well, don't we have a stormwater pond right there on the corner of, uh, Hibiscus?
We do, but that catch basin itself is actually a little bit lower than that, that's, that, uh, pond. You couldn't get the flow over there. So the flow actually runs down Hibiscus across Pine Street, uh, heads down Hibiscus and ties into a storm system that goes out to where the exercise park is. But there's a conflict in, in the middle of Pine Street that has to be opened up and a conflict has to be put in there because you can't move the sanitary sewer system. So you had to put a conflict box in that section. Well, meantime, you're doing that, you're going to have to rebuild part of Hibiscus too. So that's part of the project too.
And there's no other funding source for this?
Um, not right now. That's a better question for Ron. I just asked him for money and he gives it to me, so.
And, um, what's your, why do you feel like this project is necessary sooner rather than later?
Uh, because of the amount of flooding we have in that one section. It affects everything. When that overflows and you have that pond along there, it has effect on those properties right in that intersection there. Plus the road's starting to fail on, on Hibiscus too, it needs that attention.
Now, I'm pretty familiar with that stretch that you're talking about.
Hmm.
And I'm not exactly sure where you're saying the roads fail in.
Hibiscus between Pine Street and down Athen Street is in, is, is in poor shape.
Pine and Athens?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're going to have to, when you put that conflict box in there, there's a manhole just on the, uh, north side of Hibiscus. There's another manhole down about another twenty feet and that all has to be changed out there.
I got you. So you're going from Hibiscus, so you're going from Pine and Hibiscus north to Athens, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Now I follow you better. Okay. Um, and you're saying that it has to be, be done sooner than later? It can't wait another year?
Could you? Yes, I mean...
Because if we wait, then we get a million, three back from SWF mud and then, then we can pull from it, from another account versus from penny money.
Uh, that's a decision you can make. I, I could hold back if we need to.
Just talking out loud, I mean, right? In theory, that's, that's right?
In theory, yes.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, Tom, uh, isn't there the place that we went that the house was flooded?
Yeah, there was some flooding in that backyard, yes.
That's the, uh, Caloocasas House. Which is right behind the, uh, the community center.
Mayor, can you...
He's talking about north of the community center.
Yeah, but there's, where that catch basin is, that's been backing up.
Yeah, I know.
It affects that bowl in Hibiscus Street there at, uh, I think the other name of the street there, Cedar, not Cedar Street, but, uh...
No, it's Park, it's Park Street.
Park Street, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, yeah. Yes, it affects that there.
Somehow the water is now flooding to the, to the pond? And it goes to the house instead?
I don't know, Mayor, I mean...
I, I mean, I've been there, been there.
Me too.
Yeah, Tom and I, we went.
True, yeah. That section will fill up in the roadway. It eventually does drain off eventually, but it does affect those properties right around that pond on Park Street and the backyards along there.
I, I haven't seen that. I mean, I've seen, and I, and I checked it because recently we bought two houses on the corner of Hibiscus and Park. So I'm like super familiar with what you're talking about. And before we bought the houses, I checked to see if the stormwater retention that the city has on that corner worked as well as the Greek church parking lot because it sits higher and will dump water back, right?
Yes.
I mean, to me, they're both working there.
Tom and I, we went and the house was flooded, that's all I can tell you, you know?
You're, you're saying it's not working?
Well, you know, not as good as should be because if it was, the water was not going to the house.
My thinking is just if we had the money back in the account, then we wouldn't have to pay for it out of penny money. That's my biggest thing. I'll throw it out to the board.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Sure.
Um, looking at the, the projected stormwater fund at the end of the year after the Penn Street project, et cetera, there, there's a projected of two hundred and eighty-four thousand and if I'm correct, this project on Hibiscus is only a hundred and twenty and change. So, I mean, it'd be as simple just to move that over if we're projecting a balance at the end of the year.
That's a Ron Herring question.
That's a Ron Herring question, yeah.
I'm just making a statement, I'm not...
Well, I mean...
Okay.
That's a good statement. So I want him to reply to why he doesn't, why he funded it there and then decided to fund it.
So you're talking about the stormwater fund on the bottom of page one twelve there?
Correct, yep.
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand left there. This project is not on, is it not part of this fund, just to, so I'm clear. It's part of the penny fund.
I understand that, yeah.
That's the funding source. We're saying, why can't it be paid?
That's what he's saying.
You mean out of the two hundred and eighty-four thousand there? That's left, funded out of there. We have a fund balance policy. If we go much lower, we're going to, we're going to be below our fund balance policy, the twenty-five percent in the stormwater fund. So I mean, yes, there is two hundred and eighty-four thousand, you, but you might be, you'd be in violation of the fund balance policy.
What is that policy? Or, I mean, what is that number right now?
It, it's right around two hundred and twenty-five thousand, like I say. Off the top of my head, I, I think it's around there.
So that's sixty thousand dollars or so, right?
Yeah.
Of, uh, available funds?
So yes, if there wasn't the fund balance policy, I'd say, yes, we could charge it there.
I, we may look at splitting it, uh, if this is a need to have to have it done, it's half and half, if it's half penny and half, uh, stormwater fund, uh, if there's some available funds still, I, I'm, I'm, I mean, I see where Vice Mayor is coming from this, it makes sense to me, um, either to wait another year until next budget season or do half of it from the stormwater fund, uh, as it looks like there's funds available still before you hit that threshold. So is this the same one too that was but, bid out? I think it was, the expectation was to be bid around thirty-five thousand. It came back much higher than, that we, uh, denied it earlier this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same one?
Yeah.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Could I just say, I mean, if you wanted to move this project out another year, then it could, you do have the money in the stormwater fund in the following year, two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, there's eight hundred and plus thousand, right?
Yeah.
You'd have the money from, uh, SWF mud.
Right.
Tom, what if we, what if we gave partial funding to get engineering and whatnot going?
Well, engineering's already been done on the project. We had done the last time, engineer, uh, estimate, we put it in and it come up much higher than his estimate.
That's why it's project ready and if we find a way, another way to do it and do the project now.
Yeah, but then if you look at like the penny funds and all the other unfunded items that we're looking at here from, um, like cultural center needing, uh, exterior, uh, painting, heritage museum and Stafford House painting. I mean, these are all things that it would deteriorate over time, right? Um, renourishment of Sunset Beach and we can go into more details, but there's plenty of penny funds that could be allocated right now for some of these other items. And don't get me wrong, stormwater is a very important aspect, but, um, I think Vice Mayor brought up a great point, um, on how we fund this project.
To me, penny money is just almost free money to do good things with. And if we have an account that we can spend infrastructure money out of, you know, for stormwater, that's what I'd rather do. Even if it, you know, resorts to just partial funding of it out of the balance money that are, that's remaining. But, you know, I don't think we should continue to just eat up our penny money with projects that can be funded elsewhere or slightly delayed. Um, and then if it's right, Mayor, I'll go into the extension of the Pinellas Trail as well.
Sure, go ahead.
So that would be a similar question. Why are we paying for that?
Mm-huh.
Out of penny money? And why are, why is the county not contributing to that? Or are they?
That goes way back. Want to tell the story of the... Ron, will you tell the story of our, of our trail fund? Or Bob Robertson want to come up and? We've already committed to do this. We've just, it's been in our budget for five years to do or four years, uh, because of an eagle block. And this is already a signed commitment of the city to do this.
But if it's already in our budget, then why are we having to rebudget? Been pushed out.
Yeah, so that project is under design now and the money that you're seeing in the budget is for construction that we are expecting to get, when we get the design finished, go to construction next year.
Give a short version of the history of...
Yeah, so, um, let's see, a short version is this section of trail is being used right now, um, to, by the RO facility. We have four water production wells in, in that corridor and we have the pipelines that connect it. And in order to be able to do that, we had to, because we purchased that land with a state grant, we had to reimburse the state and in an agreement, agreed to extend the trail through there, um, when the funding was available. Funding is available as part of the penny. Um, we had to work out some issues with an eagle's nest that was present there. Uh, we've got those issues worked out and now we're in design. Um, so this is an obligation, this project is, is an obligation as part of the contract with the state.
Yeah, the obligation to fulfill the project, not to pay for it out of penny.
Correct. It could come from wherever you deem necessary, but the penny seemed like a good fund. Unless there's other thoughts.
Where else would you generally pay for it out of penny money?
Nowhere, the penny?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you say that's already gone out for bid, huh?
No, sir, it's under design right now.
So we're just, we're budgeting that amount, but we don't really know what it, exactly it would cost?
That is correct. We don't have the engineer's estimate yet.
How big a stretch is it?
A big stretch is about seventeen hundred feet. And it's, this is connecting where the trail currently ends at, at, uh, the North Anklot Nature Park.
Hmm.
And we'll bring it all the way up to Anklot Boulevard, not Anklot Road. Um, and that will tie in where Pasco is bringing their north coastal trail in. So this is, this is an integral piece to connect the Pinellas Trail to Pasco's new trail, which just now went under construction.
So where does it cross, uh, Alter Nineteen from Dixie?
Right now, we, we're preliminary looking and we're having DOT, conversations with DOT about it crossing just north of Rainville Road. We can do a, um, uh, a center refuge with a, a built up curb in the, uh, the right of way. There's a wide section of road there. That's where we're showing it right now.
And it goes along Alter Nineteen to Anklot Boulevard or it crosses on the railroad tracks and connects over there to L and R and then Anklot Boulevard?
It, yes, correct. It crosses at the railroad tracks and then once it hits L and R Industrial, it'll go north to Anklot Boulevard.
Cool.
We don't have any timetable on that, right? Any time limit when project is, should be completed?
Correct. There's no time limit established right now.
No.
I mean, that's something that I think is a, a worthy project to do sooner rather than later, but I just questioned the funding source as well.
Well, it's only because it's been so long, this was decided to be paid for your, your, in your budget. Again, Ron, do you have the answer for, look, it's at least been, this was budgeted from the penny fund to be paid for at least four years ago?
Yes, it's been budgeted and rebudgeted, it's been ongoing, you know, like I say, for the last three or four years. And as far as funding source, um, besides this, um, you know, I think it'd be the general fund or something. It doesn't qualify for impact fees, so that's why it's ending up in the penny fund.
It's painful panel is a better place, a better fund point.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing would be like the parks and rec, but that's in general, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The general fund.
Yeah. What kind of money is in parks and recreation, just out of curiosity, available to spend on something like this?
Uh, recreation impact?
Would it qualify for recreation impact?
I'd have to see what the deal, if, if it is expanding and, and new capital growth, whether we're qualified. But I think currently in recreation impact, we have... Hundred and forty-seven thousand after the projects we budgeted for two thousand twenty.
And is there anything, uh, ordinance wise or statute wise that requires us to keep X in that fund?
No, there's no fund balance policy. The fund balance policy is, is just a general fund, water and sewer fund, sanitation fund and stormwater fund.
So we could take some out of parks impact or recreation impact?
Yeah, if it will qualify for new capital growth, yes.
Could you look into that for us?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, and there's a percent, what's the, what's usually a percentage of impact you can do of the whole project?
Uh, a percentage?
Yeah.
Well, you can do of the full, depending on the project, you could do the hundred percent, you know, if it qualifies.
We can split it fifty-fifty, can't we?
Oh, correct, yes. Yeah, especially if you don't have the funding here, you could split it, you know, between the penny and recreation impact.
I think on those, uh, two items that we talked about, the Hibiscus and Stormwater Improvement and the extension of the Pinellas Trail, if we can figure out, uh, ha, fifty percent funding for, on both of those, that would free up, you know, approximately another two hundred grand in penny money that I think would go a long way for this commission to try and do good things.
So we, uh, that's going to be a follow-up, I guess, right?
Yes.
Do we need to make any, uh, consensus motion on that or anything?
Yeah, we need a consensus.
You want to call for a consensus, Mayor?
Well, I, I've had my hand up to...
Oh, I didn't see you. We need a light over here, you know?
He'll get his light when he gets a new dials, he'll have a light then.
No, I agree. I, I feel like the Hibiscus Road Stormwater, um, improvement is, is necessary. We shouldn't wait on that. So however, we can fund that if it can be fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Um, and also the extension of the trail, we've been talking about that for so many years and, and people are waiting for it and, and, and wanting it completed. So, um, yeah, if we can get some, uh, funding, um, just, without just having to use the penny funds, that would be great.
So just to be clear, well, the hundred and twenty thousand for the Hibiscus Road Stormwater Improvements, the thought is we, we move it to the stormwater fund in two thousand twenty-one out of two thousand twenty in the penny.
We want to try to do it half and half.
No, my thinking would be to not, not move it because it doesn't seem like we want to move it because it's a worthy project. But if we could use half, if we could get partial funding, sixty thousand from the stormwater fund and fund it in part with half stormwater money, half capital improvement money, and then the same thing for the extension of the Pinellas Trail. Half recreation impact, half cap, half, uh, penny money.
I got you.
But not delay any of these.
Yeah, but not delay either one of them. Fun, keep it funded in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Just move the money around, is that right, Mayor?
Mm-hmm, that'll be good.
Alright.
Everybody good with that?
Uh, I've got a consensus here, yeah.
We should download it.
Consensus here, I'm good with it.
Okay. Guess I have to speak up a good, do you?
Mayor, I've got one more comment just about transportation.
This way? Are we good?
This way.
Just a comment about transportation, um, yeah.
I can help you that way, but I can help you this way.
Um, I, I, I mean, it's, this part of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's assigned to Brick and Road Reconstruction. Um, I, I, I mean, it's, this part of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's assigned to brick and road reconstruction is obviously one of the more important projects. I know all the projects are important across the city, but one of the things that you hear the most is one of my road going to be repaved, one's going to be re-bricked, it's a terrible road, et cetera. So uh, I think this is really going to go a long way, I know there's some great projects already going on that Tom's working with this, this year's fiscal year. Um, and it's great to see that we have this, these budgeted every year, um, over year, because it is such an important aspect for our residents. Um, and it gives a whole perception of the city too, um, so.
This is a program we have had for a while, we've been doing that for a while and uh, of course, the brick speaks actually, it takes more maintenance than paving.
Yeah, but the intent.
But it looks so beautiful, yeah, it worth it.
Yeah, I guess if we're just doing it uh kind of block by block, I, I have a comment on transportation as well. I just had a question about the sponge dock seawall engineering, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I just want to know what that entailed and if it was at all related to the flooding relief going on down there?
No, 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 this is uh, over the last number of years, we've worked and replaced the seawall down at Craig Park, it's the same program, go to, go down to docks before we do have issues with seawalls, get engineering to, to make assess, uh assessments and if it's something we have to repair right away, the monies are there, if not, then you could build that fund up, at least get that started now.
Again, we're not sure of the amount, but we, you know, we know we need to evaluate that seawall there and evaluate what's the condition of it and how we need to slot into our time. We're, we're probably, we wanted to do that a year or so ago, but you know, with all the projects and the dredging and stuff, it got put back, really probably should have been on last year. Um, I have no idea, I've stopped predicting engineering work anymore, the prices and stuff. Hopefully, that's a high price, hopefully, it's going to come, but, but we need a full analysis of our area, the docks and that wall and a full examination of what needs to be done and when. So we don't have the caving in that we had down at the park and do. Um, so again, that's just, again, hopefully, it'll be less, but that's just the cover because it's, is, is necessary for us to maintain that wall and see what conditions it's in.
Okay, and that's just strictly repair, right? We're not modifying it, we're not extending the seawall, it's just.
That's just repair, yeah.
Okay, because I know that, that was, that's a lot of um, the boats down there are just concerned about, especially without the dredging right now, about their ability to even turn around or, and get out and stuff like that.
And again, we don't know what we're going to find under there too, so uh, who, you know, we'll have a whole game plan of what we find uh of that wall. So hopefully, there's not major work we have to do in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Licorice, do we have a main, uh, maintenance program to uh go periodically and uh evaluate the seawalls?
Yes.
With so much going on?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we started programming the seawalls before, probably in two thousand five, two thousand six. When we did the original engineering work on there and we do monitor the conditions. And every so often, you know, we know we have planned areas, so the seawall Craig Park is, is, is probably about eighty percent done. Some other work has to be done, but uh, we want to take that same program and put to the seawalls down there. We, we feel they're pretty safe, we walk them all the time, have gentlemen down there all, uh, right now, you know, working there all the time, but we just want to make sure we're ahead of the curve. And it's just preliminary engineering to get it started, so if something does come up, at least we're, we're ready for it.
We can see what you got it on transportation. Everybody's good with transportation? I'd like to go to page number eight and some of those projects that we have for the water and sewer and reclaim. The uh, number one is the Seabreeze Drive uh construction. In this project, is that including um the sewer lines installation and uh, and road repair? Or are we just doing the uh, just doing the piping?
Well, it'll be a complete project, uh, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and whatever restoration needs to be done to the surface following construction will be part of that project.
Wasn't a concern down there by Riverside Drive as well? Is that been completed?
I'm not sure which, what you're referring to.
On the Circle Drive, is that going to be part of the project?
No, this is strictly for Seabreeze Drive.
Seabreeze Drive.
It's going to include a, a new collection system and a new pump station to bring it back out to the existing force main on Riverside Drive.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the uh, the Circle Drive, there was also a concern with that being that it's right on the water. Is, that's going to be a different project or this is for a different time or that's not going to be included into that?
Yes, that'd be part of some other sewer infill project we would do.
Okay. Okay. Any, any questions on this project, Vice Mayor?
Not on the, this project, but in the, the page that you're on.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Uh, right below the future raw water wells for one point four million.
Mm-hmm.
Hoping somebody could elaborate on that a little bit.
Yes, I think we're uh, find it here, yeah, future raw water wells. What this project involves is bringing new water sources to the RO facility. And what we're finding is in the northern, north of the river where our well sites would be, it's um really running out of available land to put more well sites. So we're looking at all of our options. And the one that's looking best to us right now is bringing the existing freshwater sources we have down on Distant Avenue and the other well sites up to the RO plant, so that we have one source of water, a fresher source of water that can be treated by the facility and sent out in a uniform manner, rather than adding water into the system from these individual sites. We'll get a lot more water as a result and it'll help the overall product be more consistent. So right now, that's really a pipeline and connection type project that we're looking at and uh, we put it as a high priority.
So walk me through that a little bit, Paul, we're basically, we're going away from the single source uh well, more so to, to a pipeline.
Well, yeah, I don't want to say going away from it, we're still looking for sites and if we find them, we'll uh work with those property owners to get them and, and, and build a well and connect it up. But that, right now, this is looking like the most expedient way to bring more supply to the RO facility.
And that's through how, again, you're going to run a pipeline from?
Yes, we're looking at different techniques like directional underground drilling, so that you minimize the disruption to the surface. But it's going to be quite a project and we're working through how that would all go together right now.
So this one point four is just a rough estimate?
That, that's correct, yeah.
If it, then why do we need it in this year's budget then?
Well, um, you know, we're talking about coming up in October and typically, we'd work through our design for maybe four to six months. This could move pretty quickly once we get to that point. So we wanted to reserve it so that if we are able to get it started, even if it's August or September, a year from now, we're still able to do that rather than waiting.
So give me a little bit more detail as to the project from North Distant Avenue somewhere. You're going to pick up what kind of material, freshwater material?
Well, we've got existing wells on Distant Avenue that aren't being used to their full capabilities because they need further treatment. So we would come in with some sort of directional drill pipe, say eight inch diameter, and bring it up, cross probably along nineteen. We may have to go underneath the river to do that and then bring it into the RO facility at the nearest raw water connection point.
So like around Distant and Livo, because where you're talking about?
Well, that would be the, the southern end of it, yes, but then as you cross the river up along nineteen, US nineteen. And then um, come in, we've got some freshwater or raw water well pipes that extend out towards nineteen that we could tie into, so we don't have to run it all the way to the plant. So we'll be looking at ways to minimize how much pipe we need to install to get.
The raw water supply we already have.
Yes, and permitted.
Yes. And those uh valves that we would pick up, we would pick up from wherever they are and then run a pipeline somewhere under the river, under Alter nineteen and to the RO plant, is that right?
Yeah, well, we'd go uh up the river and come over to the west and come into some of the raw water wells that we have up in that area already and tie into one of those larger pipes.
Are you going to need an additional pump to push the water, because you've got quite a bit of distance, right?
It's a good question, Mayor, and that'll be part of the design, yes, we'll probably need to add some more energy at the well source to get that enough pressure to move it up to the facility. But it won't need to be as high a pressure as you would for a distribution system. So you're right, we probably need to add a bigger motor, a little more horsepower to get it up there.
And this project's being funded through the Water and Sewer Fund?
That's correct, yeah.
Um, do you have any idea what the increase in treated water will be once this is hooked up?
It really depends on how many of these wells we can reach, but I could see it being six or seven hundred thousand gallons a day, which is substantial.
And how much is generated now?
Well, we're producing about three point two. And what we really want is more options, because right now, we're using everything we've got. We're meeting our demands, okay, but we really don't have a lot of extra capacity, which you really want that, to be able to rotate your wells, optimize your operation. So right now, this is our best approach, this is money we've planned for to add to our supply, but we're seeing our approach has to change a little based on our availability to find new wells.
How many wells do we have now?
I believe it's sixteen or seventeen, Bob, seventeen, our original plan was up to twenty-two.
So we've got ways to go, huh?
Yeah.
So what are we doing, we have a plan, we have some kind of a, looking for different places to uh install more wells or?
More piping, yes, in fact, we're in the middle of negotiating the scope to nail down this pipe alternative more clearly with the cost estimate and that sort of thing. But this is our best estimate of what the magnitude of the cost would be, based on some other pipeline work we've seen bid in the city and occurring. I think we consulted our engineers as well for a rough estimate.
Any other questions we side on?
I know it's probably hard to create an average, Paul, but what do you say, what do you think the average cost is per existing well?
Okay, yeah.
Uh, if you take the land part into effect, I mean, probably seventy thousand for a well site, um, and maybe another hundred and fifty thousand to drill the well. So you're quarter million, three hundred thousand apiece perhaps?
Per site?
Per well.
Okay.
And that's just rough, I mean.
Mm-hmm. And you, and you prefer this route versus using the one point four and selecting however many more well sites, seven, right?
Yeah, I, I can say we've been working steadily on getting more well sites for, for probably over five years. And you got to reach a point where you say, we, we got to look at some other alternatives as well.
Got you, thank you.
The next item there is the Beckett Bridge utility, is that what you have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious about the Beckett Ridge Utility Replacement, uh, I just want to know how it correlated to the county project that was going on with the bridge? Or if we could possibly make the timing the same, so it's less intrusive?
Yeah, that's one of Bob's projects, he's got a lot of depth on that, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's exactly what we're trying to do, um, the commis, the county approached us and let us know they had this project. And so we had to initiate the, the design on real relocating um of wastewater sanitary force main and a portable water pipe that were in the bridge right of way. So we began work on the design and that is underway now. Uh, what you see there is the costs associated with the actual physical relocation, horizontal directional drill. So what we would wind up doing is um piggybacking a contract on, and I probably shouldn't use that term, but we would use a little interlocal agreement, so that the county's contractor would do the work, so we're not having two different contractors doing it, that's typically how you do these jobs. Um, and that's what this would be for, so that it would, it would exactly, just as you're asking, dovetail exactly with their construction.
Okay, so by the time they were done with that, we'd also be done with this, the same thing? Other work's going to be done at the same time?
It'll all be one seamless project.
Okay.
And the good news is, it looks like we found a way to get the piping out of the bridge right of way. So if for whatever reason, fifty years later, they've got to do another adjustment or whatever, we're out of the way, we don't have to do it again.
Where is it?
Where is?
Like, where's it going?
Oh, um, possibly to the north of the yacht club, there is, um, there's some right of way there that we, we think we can use. We'll have to, uh, we're doing some analysis now to see if it's feasible, but if it is, we're, we're going to try to get out of the bridge right of way.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Yes, sir.
This project being that uh, it's county project and it's going to cost us eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, are we going to be reimbursed by the county?
No, sir.
Why not?
Because our utilities are in county right of way, so it is our obligation to relocate our facilities out of, out of their project. Just as we would require any, any other utility to relocate in our rights of way.
Even though they're initiating the project?
That's correct.
Who should I call?
I don't have a comment on this project specifically, uh, I just want to bring up the water pipe and valve replacement, similar to my comment earlier about the roads. Uh, this is such an important aspect, um, because it's a, just a perception aspect, I think this is something that should be highlighted on top of the water bill when we receive it, that these funds are being placed, almost half a million dollars in this budget year to replace water pipes that are running to residential homes, uh, to continue the water quality, because Tarpin Springs has been awarded multiple times one of the top water plants in the state. Um, but it's good to, to let the residents know that also the infrastructure that goes from a water plant to their homes are being updated as well, to making sure the quality is all the way there. And by the way, this is a great list of product, um, a great list of projects that I think should also be um highlighted in the quarterly update and the um water bill that's sent out. This was, uh, just so the residents know when they're paying those water bills and they see the stormwater and water and sewer fees, what the projects are actually going towards. So um, again, I'm encouraged to see the, the water pipe and valve replacement with those amount of funds set aside for that, for those projects.
Again, just the same page.
Same page, sure, go ahead.
Uh, this is on the GIS improvements, it's listed on our IT actually on page ninety-eight in our executive summary, so I don't really know who can answer the GIS improvement question. Uh, I just want to know exactly what it entailed and if there's an existing GIS system we can kind of just piggyback off of, um.
I'll start with a general explanation and if you need more detail from Suzanne, uh, we work very closely with IT uh to keep our um GIS system up to date. We've made a lot of progress over the last several years and yes, we do have an existing system, we're able to access it online. And um, we use it regularly in our work to make sure the information we're giving to the public, the work that we do, that we're considering what's already in the ground. It even helps us in emergencies to know where the valves are, especially over the time when dirt and things cover up valves and we don't see them. We can pull this up on a tablet, that actually happened not too long ago and say, oh, wait, there's one over here, walk over and move the dirt with your foot and there it is. I mean, it's pretty fantastic technology. So um, this money is part of a regular schedule for keeping our equipment up to date. This includes the equipment that they use in the field to locate things and then transmit them back to the office to put into the system, but also tablets and those sorts of things that they use in the field to look at the data.
Okay, so this won't affect like staffing at all, this is all strictly for equipment?
Equipment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, right above that is the uh meter repair and change out, this is a great program, we do that every year. And this year, we're going to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Are we getting close to finishing with this project, because we've been doing that for a while, but it's very, very helpful, especially when we have a concern from a customer that they have a water leak, automatically you'll find out exactly what the problem is and resolve it. Are we getting close to finishing this project?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your patience, yes, we are working our way through this project. I, the latest estimate I have from staff is about seventy percent complete. And um, understand some cities will just pay a tremendous, I mean, millions of dollars to bring a contractor in and do this. And this is one of the jobs we thought we could do sort of part-time.
Part-time.
You know, as we're doing our other work, replacing these meters, and it's been effective for us, but yes, it does take longer, certainly does. So uh, each year, we're keeping that progress up, we're doing it on a prioritized basis. We work with the utility billing staff to say what, which ones are giving you trouble, which meters are failing a lot, let's go do that street. So it's really um, a working with them closely to get the best results with the money. But you're right, those meters do uh really pay a benefit back when we can do diagnostics on water use and help a customer figure out why their bill might be high, and particularly, it has helped save some water.
Yeah, I had to use the benefit several times, that was good, thank you. Any other questions on this page?
I have one from the page of four, but I'm not sure if you want to go back to that or not.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, uh, city manager gone, I'm not sure who could answer this one. So Exercise Park has um two pickleball courts and two shuffleboard courts. And I know, I think Ron discussed that there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would be available after the proposed budget is used, um, or if it is approved. To, I'm not super familiar with pickleball courts and I'm extremely familiar with shuffleboard courts. Um, just not really sure if there's a demand for shuffleboard courts based on the usages in Craig Park. And also seventy-five thousand dollars for pickleball courts that potentially could be used for the trail extension. Maybe a better use of funds this year and wait until the following year if this is still a demand, because I'd like to see some more, um, I guess, statistics. I guess statistics or a true demand for pickleball courts and additional shuffleboard courts before close to a hundred thousand dollars is spent on this project. As a whole, I think the extension of the trail is about two hundred and seventy thousand. So, that could help fund that aspect. And from a recreation standpoint, there's also the part of needing to extend the floating dock in Craig Park. I've got some questions about Highland Park and also the need for additional boat ramps around Tarpon Springs. So.
If I may add some information about your question about the shuffleboard and the pickleball courts. I also participate in the Parks Rec Advisory Board meetings and they provide their input and research to us. And I will say from my own knowledge with staff at the community center, the pickleball is exploding in popularity to the point we have the indoor at the gym. And we have to cut back on the number of days that they request to allow other programs to happen. So, this was a recommendation of our Parks Rec Advisory Board to do some outdoor courts. We're gonna be looking at doing it in-house with Tom Funtz's group to keep the cost to a minimum. And it would be over at that south parcel there, which is south of the dock park and that area where the exercise equipment is. That would be the area where those courts would go.
Is there lighting that's gonna be involved with that or is it just daytime use, you know?
I think initially no lighting. Is that correct, Tom? Just to keep the cost down. Regarding the shuffleboard, we do have a group that's been regularly asking us about rehabbing the ones at Craig Park. This idea is to put the shuffleboard courts perhaps at this other location so that that would free up more opportunities at Craig Park for other plans. So, there is, there is an interest in shuffleboard and so that's what prompted that.
I'm not against shuffleboard. I just knew we had adamant or a tremendous amount of shuffleboard courts around the city of Tarpon Springs already. So, if this is foresight for some other projects, then I understand. From a recreation standpoint, though, something that's been brought up and maybe this falls under another category, so correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, if it falls under parks. The floating dock, I've had people that are residents that use the boat ramp in Craig Park and have brought it up the past couple of years about the floating dock not really being big enough. For the amount of traffic that comes and goes to tie up the boats and that there's just not enough space to tie up on the floating dock. So, that'd be an area that I think that should be addressed of just adding a couple additional sections to the floating dock. And then, the parks is funded separately from the recreation. Am I correct in that? Is parks and recreation out of the same fund with this or is this, they're two separate funds?
Are you talking about the pickleball courts or?
Just in general. So, let's say Sunset Beach, for example, if we had a project that were beach re-nourishment.
You know, it's either out of the penny fund for that.
Okay. What about the playgrounds? Would that, that would fall into recreation, I think.
Oh, just, it's not up there?
In general, it's not up there, no.
Uh, it depends, you know, if you want it out of the penny fund or out of the recreation impact fund.
Fair enough. I know there's a couple unfunded items in the parks and recreation. We could get into more details, but there's two things that I think are really important to Tarpon Springs. One is the Sunset Beach sand replenishment. When you're out there, there's just a lot of small rocks and the beach sand is getting pretty rough. And that being one of the big attractions of Tarpon Springs, especially the residents going there because our county officials and have decided to continue to charge for parking at Fred Howard Beach. So, we're gonna have more demand at Sunset Beach. With that, it makes sense, I think, to replenish that as often as we can and try to grade out as much of the rocks as we can out of there as well. And then, when you're looking at the citywide playground rehab, I haven't played on any playground equipment lately. But if there's a need to rehab any of it, I think it's important that we rehab it as soon as, like, anytime it comes up. Because it's such an important thing to make sure kids are out playing, out in the environment and out in the parks. City Manager, if you could just help highlight one other thing, Highland Park, I know that came up for discussion. Was that funded for two thousand nineteen fiscal year or is that something that's been on, put on hold?
As far as I know, it's on hold. I don't think we, I don't think, Ron, we have it. We've, we've got a hold on that, right?
On hold, yeah.
Okay, so what about the funds? The funds were allocated in twenty nineteen or put aside? Okay, so are we gonna be doing any updates in Highland Park then this fiscal year or it's just gonna be sitting as is? Am I correct in the way this reads?
Right now, we're looking for options. We're in the process now of surveying the residents and seeing what the residents would like to see and then finding that and bringing that back.
Is it the residents of that area, of the neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Okay. I just know there's, from, I mean, if it's additional, well, I know it's a long time coming. It's a park that's been neglected for quite some time. And so, anytime we could put some additional funds there and get some projects going, I'm not sure what it may be. If it's at least a better walkway out to the dock and the lake, I mean, that could be a start, right?
That's right now what we're looking at, more of the things that we can do with our equipment and our personnel now. You know, maybe some small amenity, but mostly that's what we're looking at now. We've done a lot of work clearing, clearing the brush and that sort of thing. The dock is in better shape than we thought it was. There's not major repairs that need to be made to the dock. So, right now, we're just looking at some different things that we could possibly do with our crews and make it better or something real, real low cost.
Sure, and I know a lot of the residents that back up to the park, they really did like the foliage that was there. So, if there's additional cedar, or cedar trees that would be put in to help buffer between the people running around the park and the houses.
That would be tree fund where we have money to, we're able to do that without affecting anything with your budget.
Yeah.
But those are things we're looking at now, more of those things like you talk about instead of some of the budgetary items we're looking at.
Okay. And a boat ramp, I think, is an additional necessity. I'm not sure where that could be, if it's, there's a spot over by the splash park anywhere? Or if there's any other areas to help expand parking, if it's out by Sunset Beach, et cetera. That's an important part of that. I could touch later on that, on some of the eight hundred thousand dollars that could be potentially used for other projects.
Since we're talking about recreation, Mr. LeCouture, the tennis court on Riverside Drive is getting to be in very bad shape. Any plans for that?
Tom, you wanna tell what you've recently looked at and what we plan to do?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, we were at the process now of. Finished up an evaluation on the deck over there. We believe we can redo the deck and then this year, we're gonna replace the fencing around it. We do have a few more lights we have to put in. We put it in-house. Then we got like three or four more lights on the east side of the tennis courts. But hopefully, the next six months or so, that'll be up in pretty good shape.
Tom, constantly we're getting new cracks on the court. Is that because the base is not holding up or what?
Now, the base, it's been there for a number of years. What we have to do is, we have, we've talked to a couple of different contractors that actually do this kinda work. And we looked at possibly taking up the whole deck and replacing the deck and pouring our own deck and then they come back and put a finish on it. But we found out from another gentleman on how they're using a different type of product on top of it. It's a mesh. That we can put over the existing one, put that mesh down and then resurface it at probably half the cost of replacing the whole deck is. We had a conversation with him actually the other day, so we're working on getting some stuff together on that, getting a price on it and hopefully go that route. And then, once that's done, then we'll replace the fence. Cause that's definitely in dire need. We just did do some, also finished up some drainage work back there. We had some drainage work out of Hill we completed.
Yeah, that was my, one of my questions is the timeframe. So, you're thinking in about six months that that could be completed?
Probably somewhere that near, yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to say, make a couple of comments on what Commissioner Carr said. As far as the playground equipment, I do go to the playgrounds with my granddaughter. I think you all have been doing a great job with keeping up and rehabbing the equipment. This past year, you have done a lot of work in the last couple of years. But of course, that's always something that we need to keep up with.
Yes.
And for the beach sand replenishment, I talked to Bob, I don't know where he is right now. When we do the dredge about possibly using what's collected for Sunset Beach, which I know that we really need to replenish that beach. And as you were saying, remove the rocks, but we talked about the possibility of using some of that, whatever we, you know, collect that can be used.
If they can be used. I know I usually do a beach replenishment in the fall, once we get through the hurricane season.
Right. Anyway, that was an idea. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, again, sorry for bouncing around here, but on the exercise park for the shuffleboard courts. Again, I get it if we're replacing those, if we're planning to put something new in the Craig Park, but do we have any idea what that new thing might be? I just don't feel comfortable funding something that's going to replace something that we don't have any plans to be replaced.
Well, there's several ideas and that's something we'd have to come across when we decide a whole plan on what we wanna do. There's a plan to assist, as you say, with the boat ramp and the parking thing. There's two trains of thoughts. Utilize that area to increase the efficiency of the boat ramp and stuff and the other idea is to make more green space. So, you've got two sides that are passionate about, about two different things and so, and that would be a board's decision. But the two things, maybe there's a third one out there, but the two things everybody talking about is just more green space with those out there. The concrete you got now that's not used for green space or to use that to assist with the problem with boat trailers on a plan that we had talked about bringing forward in the future of there. So, those would be the two things that you would utilize that for.
Okay.
There may be more, but that's the two things that's been talked about, talked about.
Is that coming up soon, though? Like, on an agenda within the next few months? Okay, I just didn't wanna fund something if it was just gonna sit there and then we'd have so many shuffleboard courts. Cause whenever I'm out at Craig Park right now, there's nobody out there using them. And then, secondly, as far as the dredging goes, possibly using their sand, I think, I don't know if it's been planned out yet. But isn't it possible? And again, I think this might be a good question for.
Your back, Bob, cause I had asked about that.
Yeah, I just wanna know, cause typically doesn't it work how the contractor might use like a hydrocyclone dredge and they might just pump it right on Anclou Beach? I know that was floated around when it first happened and they'd pump it into, into a hydrocyclone right on Anclou Beach. And then, they'd put it all, all the clean sand right there, right there and then, and they'd be able to do that. Have we made any determination of that? Cause if it's all gonna go to Anclou Beach, then we can't count on that sand.
Well, what they have determined is they can't go to the Anclou Park for the materials there. There's a cultural resources issue there, so can't use that park. But the majority of the materials is gonna go to the Upland site that we've already determined, the site that we've already used previously, north on Eleanor Industrial. There may still be a possibility to use some of the materials that are dredged in the outer cuts at Sunset Beach for re-nourishment. But at this point, that's not determined yet.
Okay, thanks.
Who will make the final decisions? Not the Army Corps of Engineering?
Yes, that would be the US Army Corps. And I have suggested that as an option to them, so I know they are considering that.
Vice Minister, here, please.
Thank you. Just to finish up or follow up on the exercise park, I'd be in favor of just not funding the shuffleboard courts tonight. I don't see anybody using them. I mean, the pickleboard courts, I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, I'm not a pickleball guy, but I see it coming on like, like crazy. I mean, I see it.
It's been very popular.
I have people asking me about real estate to build pickleball courts from like a private side, so there must be some money and there must be people doing it. I actually saw where it's being offered at, not Cypress Run, but the one across the street. Crescent Oaks, yeah, Crescent Oaks has them now. So, I mean, the pickleboard court, pickleball court thing, I think is a good idea, but the shuffleboard courts, I mean, to me, I'm in favor of just not even funding that for that particular location.
And we can immediately move that to, there's fifteen thousand wreck impact fees for the trail. There's our start.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, I mean, that's why, this is what we're here to do. So, I'm okay with defunding that and putting it towards the trailer or whatever else we see fit. The restroom entryway, somebody tell me how we spend five grand on that?
Yeah, it's actually from the wreck building in Craig Park to access the restrooms. A lot of times, they have events in the evenings in there. After nine o'clock when the restrooms close and that way, they can use it for private parties and or private events or whatever Craig has going in that building to access the restrooms.
So, the bathrooms in Craig Park?
They're only accessible from outside, not access from inside.
So, you're saying that this will do what?
Will open the doorways inside so they can access it from inside the building to go into the restrooms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sometimes they have evening events out there.
Classes.
Classes and things like that.
That will be more secure.
Much more secure, yes, sir.
The door locks, I mean, I mean, it's labeled entryway.
Yes.
So, that makes me think like five thousand dollars on the sign.
Yeah, it could've been different, but yeah, access, restroom access.
Okay, so that covers lock and all that, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and are they magnetic lock?
That's what we like to put on there.
I mean, those are, you know, some of the things on the unfunded items, I think, at a certain point, we should go over since we're freeing up a little bit of funding tonight. Maybe there's some things on there that we could select from.
There are some items that I like to talk about. Yeah, yeah, I wanna. Are we finished with the recreation, anybody?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Actually, yeah, with the recreation, sorry, I am finished with the recreation.
Oh, you're done with that?
Yeah, I'm good on the recreation, but not with all the capital.
Would you finish with the Warren's work and reclaim, right? Anybody has anything else on that? I'd like to go to the, the unfunded. The restrooms downtown and down at the docks, magnetic locks, ten thousand dollars. Can you, is that a safety concern that we need to go to work?
That is also one we're hoping we have enough money as we leave in this budget. That was one of the things we've got identified. That hopefully, we have, as we balance the budget out, that we may, that we have the money in there to do that.
That's part of the single page you're talking about? I got that on the top.
Yeah. Go ahead, that.
Say what exactly was that question again?
He's, he's one about the funding electric lock, the locks.
Yeah, is that something that's going to provide more safety or security or was that?
More security, yes. Once in a while, some of the locks down there have tendency and I like to get jimmyed, broken into, so this will make it a little more secure. Hopefully, cut down some vandalism we have on occasion.
And that's only ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
I think that's something we should be done if it was safe.
Again, I think we're gonna be able to do it within, within the money we have left in this year's budget to go ahead and do that.
Another item that I'd like to discuss is the Culture Center, the plaster repair and painting interior, twenty-five thousand dollars and also the exterior light. You know, we're spending a lot of money to redo the Culture Center, which is a beautiful building, a historical building. Yeah, and I think we ought to finish it and complete the whole thing. You still gotta go back to it, eh?
With that one?
Bob, you wanna, Bob, you?
You're a better speaker than I am, anyway. Well, I don't, Tom, I don't know the nature, full nature of this project, but I can say that we are trying to get the plaster repair done under the existing renovations now. This contractor is doing a good job. They have not come to us with a lot of change orders. So, we get to the end of the project and we have money left under the contingency, I'd like to try to include, and we've already asked them to provide a quote for the services. To do the plaster repair, particularly in the second level where you can see the, basically see the wall through that, where it's fallen through. We're trying to do that part now, at least that part. I don't know about the painting, Tom, but if that was supposed to be an extensive interior painting project or?
No, it's not. No, it's that one room up in the southwest corner.
So, it's the same room?
Same room, we'll do the, we can do that in the house.
Okay, so if we can't fit that in, we'll.
What about the exterior lights, Bob?
Exterior?
Exterior lights for the Culture Center.
That's not something to have in this project now.
They wanna add some exterior lights to the entrance and the exit on both sides of the building over here. Light up a little bit better because it's kinda hard to see sometimes at night.
Yeah.
That'd be a separate project.
Separate project, yeah.
I'd like to see the whole project completed. You know, we spent a lot of money on it. And this is a historical building. I think it should be completed if I have the consent of the board.
So, it sounds like what they're saying is the plaster repair and painting is already gonna be taken care of.
Yeah.
So, if we just spend an extra five grand on exterior lighting?
Lights and get it done with it.
I mean, I did, you know my feeling. I wanna be able to utilize the Culture Center more so now than ever, which, why wouldn't we? So, I'm good to spend more money there. I just wanna make sure that we use it. I'm in favor of the exterior lights. I think the most important thing is you make sure that the lights are actually, if they're at the entranceways, if they're within the fixture itself. Instead of just having a light that's just throwing light all over the place, similar to what you've seen in kind of the old fashioned lights around town, right? So, you really are capturing, you're being directive of the light where it's going instead of just light pollution all over the place. While we're talking about lighting, though, too, it'd be good to see some type of uplighting up against the building as well at night. So, landscape lighting is not that expensive at all, actually, for some LED lights.
We could probably cover that all in the exterior lighting.
Yeah, you could probably do that.
Yeah, you could probably do that for less than a thousand bucks, I would think, uh for the whole building, but you understand what I'm talking about, right? Some uplighting up against the building, because it really gives a whole aesthetics of the brick building. You see it better at night. Uh it just gives a much better look to it too as well, but I'll, I can definitely support that one there as well.
I agree.
You got consensus from me. I'm good with that.
Okay. Anything else on this page, number twelve?
I've got one from before that, actually.
Which one?
The capital outlay fiscal year twenty twenty. It's just, it's just broken out, um some different capital improvement projects. It talks about computers and some other things. The one I have a question about is on page eleven.
Okay.
It's the Land Preservation Fund, future approved land purchases. I'm not familiar with this, so. Okay. Someone can uh elaborate on this a little bit further?
Yeah, that's the Land Preservation Fund. There's no, that's, it's just a placeholder in case there are any land purchases come up and stuff.
Basically, what it was, he wanted to take a percentage of any time we sold something and put it towards future funds for, you know, recreation purposes.
So is it like, uh for instance, Sisler Field when that uh building was purchased and torn down for additional parking? Would that be a good example of what that potentially could be used for, right?
It it, yeah, it's based on recreation and conservation purposes is what it can be used for. Basically, there's forty-eight thousand dollars left in that fund.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying that. A couple of things, too, just want to touch base on um. I mean, it sounds silly, but uh the double dumpster corral out at the Splash Park, uh this is something with the city's looking at doing this. These are, these are sore sites, although they cover up a sore site of a dumpster. There's still a pretty sore site um overall as well. So I think if we, the city uh manager could work with the Public Arts Committee, um and that be one of the dumpster corrals that we look at. Um along with Sunset Beach and the golf course in Sisler Field, um that we could do some type of um. Mural with a local college student and local high schooler, that we could have some type of competition to do that based on past discussions. Uh upgraded trash containers at the parks, uh that's a significant amount of money, but I do support it because it's important that we have um attractive trash cans. Again, it's the details that really make the difference in the way people feel about our parks and our town overall, uh so I do support that as well. And let me just check one more thing. Uh there's a new shed. It talks about the solid waste. I think, Tom, can you help out with that one to let me know what that's about? It's twenty thousand dollars for a shed.
Get my mind up over here. Yeah, that's for uh putting our supplies in. We need a new Kubota. I've asked for that. Uh so we'll, we'll put the uh the stuff in storage, uh pretty much keep it out of the weather when we can. And then, of course, we keep extra cans in there, uh extra supplies. Uh our space now is limited, so.
Okay, so it's basically a garage and for the tractor, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Uh yeah, thank you, Commissioner Carr. Uh I didn't want to interrupt you, but I have some additional information on the Land Preservation Fund. Um I actually wrote down exactly what it says in uh writing about the Land Preservation Fund before our meeting. So the purpose of this fund is to acquire land within the city that is suitable for preservation, open space, or park. So the forty-eight thousand you see right there, um I believe is is pretty, pretty underutilized. Because the purpose behind the Land Preservation Fund originally um was was actually to kind of. Side step some of the environmental issues we get into um with with property rights and that sort of thing. And use land for preservation within the city, because so many problems we have with new development and stuff like that is. Well, they have property rights, they own this land. Is this really government's role to jump in here and say whether they can or cannot build this? Um so the Land Preservation Fund is is good for the city, I believe, anyway. Um just because the Land Preservation Fund would take a portion of um, you know, land sale. And as that would add up, that forty-eight thousand would eventually ideally add up to a purchasing number where the city could buy land. And they would be able to use that land strictly for exactly what I said, preservation, open space, or a park. So that includes, you know. Uh in theory, buying uh an acre of land and just never touching it. Um the city could just say this land is just natural Florida land. We're gonna leave it. We're never gonna do anything with it. And we buy it using the Land Preservation Fund. Um that could also be uh for a park, if we wanted to develop a park on a piece of land. Um or again, just an open space that we didn't want to touch, but in the the theory behind the Land Preservation Fund is that we would eventually buy land. Using the fund that would help, you know, land preservation, to to put it bluntly. Um so yeah, the forty-eight thousand in it right now is um kind of laughable, especially with how much land today costs. But in theory, the Land Preservation Fund is supposed to be there so that we can buy land and preserve it.
Commissioners, your understanding of how the fund is funded through the city's own land sales?
No, I think, and I think there's some wording in the Land Preservation Fund where it gives. I don't know if it gives the board or if it gives city staff, and maybe the city manager can help me out on this. Um. Uh I I think it gives us the option of, in different sales, we can take a percentage of it. And we we can say we're gonna reserve this this percentage for land preservation. I think it's very small, but it was supposed to add up over time.
Ron, you want to explain the fund and in fact, where the, where the money we got in there, where the, where the money so far has not been?
It's from city properties and I believe the only amount of money that went in there was a hundred thousand dollars from the sale of Beverly Nursing Home.
Yeah.
But it it's only generated from our sales.
Correct, city land sales.
So have we, have we not, have we not sold any land since then?
No.
Okay, so this is just if the city were to sell any land, we'd be able to use that.
We have to take the portion of it and put it towards that fund to buy land, pres- preserve it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, this is, this is a good, a good fund in theory, I think. Um obviously, you know, we're not selling very much land right now. Um and I'm not even asking that we do that, but I think we might want to look into expanding the Land Preservation Fund or or possibly trying to get it some more funding, even if it is just built up over time. It'd be really nice if whenever one of these environmental issues come up, whether it's, you know, stuff like the Walmart property or. Uh the Wawa property, um or in one of those instances, the city would be able to legally buy a piece of land and preserve it as either natural Florida lands. Or make it a park. Um again, I'd have to get with Ron um and the city manager and see if we could get creative and. See how we could get more money into that, but I think this is an underutilized fund right now.
Can I make a comment on this here real quick? Uh one of the beautiful things about Savannah, Georgia is that they have these uh squares throughout their town. Um and this is talking about land preservation and um creating a park or some type of preserve in that area. And a good example that this may be used, although this is within the city of Tarpon Springs, but it's unincorporated city. Is that there's a gas station on Penous Avenue that's for sale for three hundred and five thousand dollars, I believe, or three hundred fifty thousand dollars, just across from Bread and Butter Deli. Again, it's a, it's not an attractive site. It's an area that the city potentially could buy or a wealthy individual, if they want to donate money to the city, could buy. And then donate to the city and then also make a a green square, right? So it's a green space. It has a protective covenant on it. Um and then you could kind of look at these areas all around Tarpon Springs and designate, this would be an area that would be desirable to see a green square. You could put a statue on it with public art, or you could put a fountain of some sort, um you put a rose garden or something along those lines, but that one, again, is a creative way to get. Beautification and then also some individuals passionate about Tarpon Springs to be involved. So I mean, that could be a way how the fund is used as well. Uh with some projects to preserve some of the land or take a a property that is in a distressed mode or currently when you look at it. And get it, rev all the concrete and putting some green space on there would be, I think, beneficial. I think we should look at this from a funding standpoint as well. I mean, I support Commissioner Donovan. I've got some ideas and I I'll be willing to bring up in uh future meetings.
Um also, real quick, just while I have the floor, I did want to get consensus. Uh I agree with uh the Vice Mayor's shuffleboard sentiment. Um that we shouldn't fund it, right? At least not right now until we know exactly what we're doing. Um so I just want to see if we could get board consensus on not funding those shuffleboard courts for the exercise park. I would be in favor of not funding them.
Yeah, would you?
I don't know. When Tom spoke, uh he said that there is a need. There's uh residents that uh that really want the shuffleboard courts. So I'm not sure what that would create uh with the residents that that really still, especially if we get rid of them at. At Craig Park, as we've been talking about, because of plans that we had. I'm not sure about that, about not funding it. Tom, where are you? Do you, you know, do you see a real need for the shuffleboard court?
There's not much use. Uh I've had, a few people have asked.
There's just one real group that wants to get something started.
There's one group uh that asks about it quite often.
But that's the first in my ten years I've heard anybody.
And mine too.
So it's not like it'd be a really huge.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have to redo the ones that are there now if you're gonna redo, the ones that are in Craig Park now will need somewhere in the very near future to resurface, so we'd have to make a decision.
But we're talking about maybe getting rid of those.
It would, yes.
So we would have no shuffleboard courts. Well, it doesn't seem like there's a huge need then to me, from what you're saying.
Uh no, and we could probably, we could build those in-house. If it comes a couple of years down the road, I know we have the talent to do it.
Then I'll go along with you guys.
Yes, you um, are you moving along or should I ask another question?
Are we still on the unfunded uh?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah?
I was gonna ask about the, see if I heard right, the uh that we were spending three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars out of the unassigned fund balance. Is that right, Ron? On page ten. General fund, unassigned total.
Yes, that is correct.
So we're gonna spend three hundred and thirty-four thousand out of unassigned fund balance, is that right?
Correct.
In other words, reserve?
Yes.
Okay. Uh I wasn't aware that when I uh supported the motion to reduce the mileage rate. That we were gonna be borrowing money from the unassigned fund balance?
We're, we're, that's correct. We're not using any unassigned fund balance. It's still at eight point eight million. I think it's just, it's just a term up there that just, it's uh. We're using general fund monies, so maybe that unassigned wording in there could be a little bit confusing there. But we're not using unassigned fund balance and.
We're not taking money from reserves?
No.
No, no, no.
All right, then I'm all right then.
Sorry about that.
Accounting things that hieroglyphics that we try to get Ron to.
I'm sorry, my accounting terms, I'll, I'll get better.
Um, all right, well then if we're not taking money out of reserves, I would ask about the new Prius for the cemetery. That standard, we provide the uh cemetery attendant uh vehicle. I'm assuming that's what it's for?
Well, it'll be on site, and this is tying in with the expansion that we're planning. We need to be taking customers over to see the new area on a regular basis. There's also regular trips to City Hall from the cemetery, so this is the main vehicle that's used to go back and forth. It's our effort to make a move in that sustainability direction, using a hybrid vehicle instead of a typical vehicle. Um to accomplish city business in a way that really wouldn't be impacted by that type of vehicle.
So we're using it for, well, we still have like a cemetery truck on site for?
We do have a pickup truck that's used for shared uses uh around picking up branches and taking them over to the landfill site. Sort of more commercial type duty, so um this is more for the runs to City Hall and taking customers around. I see that happening quite a bit once that gets into swing.
We don't have a cemetery, other than the existing cemetery, to sell plots in, right?
Well, we're finishing up the, the bid documents to um construct that site, which I expect that to be in that next coming fiscal year twenty. To be ready to start doing something and showing sites by then, so that's why I'm planning for that now.
Okay, I mean, stepping out of the work truck and into the Prius to get to City Hall, to me, I don't think that there's any value there. I mean, selling plots, I could have some buy-in for that, but um I mean, until we have new plots to sell, I don't see where it takes much of a priority. I mean, it's, it's definitely gonna be a year before you have anything built, right?
Yes.
So I mean, to me, I don't, if, assuming we already have a cemetery truck, I don't, I don't think that we need to have a Prius for. Cemetery truck to stay there and take the Prius uptown. That's just me then.
Is, excuse me, is this already funded through the uh Perpetual Care Fund?
That's correct, yes.
So what's your proportion to eliminate that?
I mean, eliminate it until there's a need for it. I mean, to me, the biggest need is to sell plots. But if we don't have anything to sell, then why do we need it in this year's budget? And to say that we're gonna go from a work truck to a Prius to come uptown, I don't think that's necessary.
So this is something you can wait another year or so?
Well, we have two different staff members. We have the office person who does the trips to City Hall and we have the grounds person that uses the truck for. Things around grounds, getting fuel for vehicles. I mean, they can share that vehicle back and forth, but it really is something where both can be used at the same time. So I don't want to mislead you to think that one will sit idle while the other one's being used. Um I also will tell you that the main way to show customers, I know we're talking about the timing. Um is to drive them over to that new site. We really don't want to use the courtesy cart to cross Jasmine. I I feel that's a little bit of a stretch safety-wise, so we want to be using our vehicle to exit out of Jasmine and drive in to that new site that way. So I do see it for that purpose. Whether or not there'll be a field ready to show plots by um, say, July or August of next year. Remains to be seen, but it is possible.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when you're using, when we're gonna have the new cemetery, it's gonna be a connection, a connect road. From one cemetery to another, crossing the Jasmine.
That's correct. Yeah, we'll be leaving.
Golf car or something like that, ain't it?
Well, that's more for staff. I don't recommend that as a regular way to show customers the cemetery. That's more for staff to get back and forth with mowing equipment. And that sort of thing. We're gonna have a crosswalk going from the cemetery to the one next door. But to show customers, we'll use that back exit on Jasmine. That's part of this budget as well, is to have that sliding gate. Can leave out through the back, drive up Jasmine safely, make a left into the new cemetery and and show the customers that area. And then return back to the office.
And funding is available for that, right?
Yes, that's part of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, which is designated for cemetery uses.
Isn't there, there's a substantial amount of money in there, isn't there?
Yeah, I think it's close to two million.
Yeah.
Um but probably nine hundred thousand of it will be used for the construction of the expansion. And then I'd like to recommend that um we keep in mind a mausoleum eventually as a future phase, so. But yes, short answer is yes, there's funding there.
Mayor, if you mind, um I. Um so there's not really a need, and I guess a good, better question for me to understand is, does the city have a program where they'll reimburse the employee mileage? For driving their own vehicle, uh because I think from a maintenance standpoint, if we put it off another year to preserve it on the back end from replacing it. That may be the most prudent thing to do. Uh I know you're not one to just go out and spend money just to spend money, but in this aspect, I I do see, I mean, there's not another cemetery to sell plots at. There's not necessarily a need yet, so we just might be able to push to fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And if someone needs to drive up to City Hall, I mean, can we just reimburse them by mileage? What's the problem with that? I mean, every other corporation does that typically.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to do that. I'd find an old car to do, because you you've got insurance problems. You got insurance and liability problems if someone in their own car.
Got it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's the biggest problem with there and stuff. Um but again, it's from the perpetual fund, whether it's bought then or or not. Um I'm sure, because it's twenty-five thousand is gonna be spent, plus it's our initial thing to move into. Into the sustainability and show we're starting to go to those vehicles, and since it's in that fund, so it doesn't really matter. It's not like the general fund and you're gonna be able to fund something else with the money. You're not gonna, it's just gonna still sit in there and you're gonna spend it maybe in October or November instead of June, July. So I think he wanted to get a a push on so we could use it for what it needed to be doing now. We started our sustainability program with vehicles. And it's a necessary thing out there so it can be used, but could it wait in he budget when, I mean, if so, if we start hopping on the cemetery project? Could we come back to you because it's still funds gonna be there? It's not like we'll use it for anybody else. The twenty-five thousand will be sitting there. You know, we could come back to you and do it. I think he just wanted to get a jump and get it going and also as our sustainability manager to start. That is the first place where he saw the ability to use a sustainable vehicle um to accomplish those things back and forth, so. But it's really, it's really up to this board. If we, if you want us to wait and see the need in July, if we, if it's before the end of the budget year, come back and say, hey. We need that vehicle now. It's not like we gotta adjust funds for anything else, so it'd just be at the will of the board. Do we do it now or do we wait till it comes back to you and we add it from that fund?
I support that uh that that we do it now because you don't know when we're gonna need it and that we may need it before the next budget year. Um and it is, you do have it funded, so I I don't see the reason to wait another year and use, use your funding in twenty twenty-one when you have it. Uh budgeted for this year, so. I support you, uh, getting the Prius.
I mean, my thinking is this, the funding is there, and it's a perpetual fund. It's Mark's point, it's not like you're not gonna use this money for this and utilize it for something else. But my thinking is, is if we're gonna use it for sales, and we don't have anything to sell, why not have a newer vehicle, not a year-old vehicle, when we're ready to sell? That's the only thing. I mean, there's no, I mean, no one would be happier than me if you had plots to sell this time next year, but you're not going to. I mean, I don't think. Maybe you are, and if you do, then I'll give you accolades. But I mean, just with knowing how projects go, and that being a pretty good-sized project, maybe you will, but I mean, maybe you won't. I don't know.
Uh, don't you have a waiting list, uh, of people?
I'm serious.
Don't you have a waiting list of people?
That's an Irene question.
Who, yeah. A waiting list of people who?
We do not, because we haven't, they haven't determined what the price would be yet.
I guess the prices and all that.
Okay, I thought we had, we already had a, a waiting list. Okay, thank you.
And when do we think the new cemetery will be ready to be able to sell?
Well, um, I told you we're gonna be going to bid probably about three months ago, and that hasn't happened yet. So, uh, you know, Vice Mayor Chair Pantis' point's well taken. It's hard to say. Um, I'd like it to be by July and August, and that's good planning. You wanna plan to be ready when, you know, you could be ready. Um, could we wait a little bit? Sure. Um, and we've gotten along without the second vehicle to come to the office. We can do it a little longer. I can also tell you, though, typically it takes many months by the time you order it before it comes in. So that just all needs to be factored in. Uh, I certainly agree with the city manager's option. If, when the need starts to become clear, we can come back to you and request that purchase then.
Uh, I will support that. Let's wait and see when we need it and, uh.
I think it's pretty, yeah.
Okay. Do we have consensus on that?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. We got the money ready for it anyway. Uh, do we have any other, uh, items to discuss on the CIP?
What's a boom truck used, I'm sorry, I just kinda jumped into that. What's a boom truck used for? Is that for the pipes that are picked up and dropped?
That's for our meter readers, and, um, they work on large meters and the piping assemblies, and many times they have to lift them up to get them in a truck and work on them, and then replace them back again. So, um, that's basically like a crane type of truck.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the CIP?
Uh, pertaining to unfunded projects or the?
Yeah, anything.
Yeah, I've got a couple of items on the unfunded. If, I'd like to make a comment. Um, there's a few items that I'd like to prioritize in the unfunded, um.
You wanna go back to page number twelve then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, you brought up, um, a couple of good ones. Um, the exterior lighting at the Culture Center, I think, is very important. But looking back at the other aspects, uh, there's City Hall Auditorium carpet, uh, since we're all here right now, and City Hall Auditorium, we can look around. That beautiful green, um, well-used carpet. And I think it's, uh, would serve the city well to, uh, replace this to a, a carpet that may not fade the yellowish color that it has now or show dirt, et cetera. So, uh, I do think that should be on a priority, um, list. The Stafford House paint exterior and replacement of cabinets and door placement. Uh, I'm not really sure what the cabinets, um, entail, but I would support the paint of the exterior ASAP if there's a need for that. Because I know, um, in the historic houses, if they don't keep the paint on the building, the wood will start to rot, and then it's gonna start costing the city additional funds. So if the city could put some funds, um, in priority to at least paint the exterior of the building, it's gonna help prevent additional maintenance costs later on down the road. Again, this falls in the, uh, the Heritage Museum, um, the paint, uh, of the, oh, I'm not sure if that's, is that interior or exterior? I don't know. Exterior? Yeah, so if it's the exterior, I would support that to be on the priority list as well. Like, it's the exit door bars and the kitchen replacement flooring. I, I don't necessarily see that as a priority, but, um, the exterior paint is, uh, also, um, I think a priority that should be brought up to the list. Um, and then something that's been talked about for the past couple of years is the downtown decorative lighting and electrical upgrades. Uh, this is something that the board and past, um, passports has, uh, have come to consensus on, and the past couple of years have been brought up. Um, and I think this, again, this is one of those aesthetic things. Uh, we're in summertime right now. If you don't necessarily see it, um, as well as you would towards fall, winter, and early spring because of the sun going down about five-thirty. But this really, um, when people visit Naples, they talk about the lighting in the trees, and then you visit some of these other areas at night, it, it encourages outdoor activities. It encourages more people to be out in the street. Um, again, this doesn't have to be strictly in downtown. It could be also in the sponge docks as well. Um, and so I would encourage that the city staff find some type of priority to move forward with this. And that would, that would encompass the Mears parking lot, the Orange Street parking lot, um, the streets along Tarpon Avenue, um, to really get a, a good system in place that really, um, is quality, it's gonna last for quite some time. Um, one thing that wasn't on this list, and that we had some discussions, um, last meeting was the BOC tablets versus our fabulous workbooks that, um, staff puts together, which I appreciate because it's a lot of great information. Uh, but for my city that's trying to go be more green-oriented, um, I do think it's important to use less paper and resources to print all this paper. Um, a couple of other items is the Sunset Beach parking, uh, find a way for additional parking in Sunset Beach, and looking and evaluating the north side of the Sunset Beach causeway. Uh, today, if an individual parks, uh, when it's a busy weekend, you have boat trailers that will park along the sidewalk in the road, and then you also have vehicles parked in the sidewalk in the road. So if you're coming into Sunset Beach or leaving Sunset Beach, it ultimately creates a one-way street because only one car can get by. So it makes it really difficult to do that. So either the city needs to say no parking on that side of the street, or move the sidewalk closer to the water, and then you could fit a whole car on that side of the street, which I think that's probably the best situation, because we're lacking parking spaces in Sunset Beach in peak season. That would be something that we've had discussions in past, um, conversations about this. Uh, also decorative signs. The city's done a great job with the historic signs, uh, in the historic district and within the CRA district. I think we could all agree to that. Um, I think it's important to continue that effort across the city and, and the historic district. Um, if there's still funding that needs to be placed, there's also the secondary signs. So you think of the no parking on this side of the street, the speed limit signs. Those are things that should be addressed as well. Um, and also encouraging the city, and I think it's a great idea, but, uh, I would ask the rest of the commission's support in this, is looking at the, um, the sponge docks as also replacing the signs in the sponge docks, looking at along Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Avenue, and also the four-way stops that are, um, heavily trafficked to, um, put some type of decorative, um, street sign pole in for the stop signs. Again, it's just the whole perception aspect. Uh, Dunedin's had these for quite some time in their downtown and, um, around their downtown area. Um, I think it's just good to continue this project because it really does give an aesthetics and its way it comes across, and Tarpon Springs is a great way. And then if we're still looking for additional funds, uh, we don't wanna forget about our, um, gateway funding for the signs, a sponge dock entrance sign, and then also the signs for the parks, um, the park signs and the public building signs. The city clerk's a great example. Um, that sign's been, it's a similar sign that you see at Craig Park, you see at Rotary Field, you see out in front of the City Hall. Um, it's an old dock piling that has the name of the city on there, of the city building, but they're starting to fall down. They're starting to deteriorate pretty bad. So it's, again, it's one of the conversations that we've had is updating those signs. So it's just, we need to find some funding for it. Um, and I, I think one of the things that hasn't been discussed is the eight hundred thousand dollars that's set aside for the turn basin. Is that for penny money for capital, or is that for?
It's penny money for capital.
So that's funding. If that's being funded, if that potentially gets funded by the state, county, or federal government, then we have additional funds to use for some of these other projects then, right?
Yes, again, that's a placeholder to hold, um, like we did with the original dredge. Um, we put back some projects. We saved money in the penny so that we would be in a position, if we didn't get money, that we could fund it. That's what we're doing it the same way here, especially since we got a short timeframe. For when they're ready to go, we have to go, 'cause if we don't piggyback with them, the cost is gonna be more than double.
It's like a million dollars, man.
So we've gotta hold it. If the funding's not there from somewhere else, we gotta be, you know, we're not gonna have a timeframe to be able to wait and get the money. We're gonna have, you know, we'll have to do it. So that's why it's a placeholder. That placeholder comes off, you've got eight hundred thousand dollars to, for penny-type projects that, that your discretion, this board will immediately be able to sit down and talk about what projects are gonna take priority. I'll also be bringing in another one that's gonna be considered in that list where, is, um, the one that's important in several different ways, and we'll probably, I don't wanna jump the, jump the, um, the presentation we give you. But we've been looking at roundabouts, and the roundabout at the end of MLK in Spring in there not only would be something to help with the traffic, but another one of our areas dealing with the rising tides and stuff, the, the flooding project, we're, we're gonna be bringing something to you on that. And that would be another one of consideration if that eight hundred thousand come available to do, and that'll be coming probably in the next couple of meetings. Um, just the concept to have it out there. We haven't, you know, we don't have a full scope of what it's gonna cost or something, but something to keep in mind with all of the other things, um, where we might need to be looking for some funding too, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Um, and then you brought up South Spring. Obviously, South Spring is an area that the board, I think, has directed you for design uh, along the rocks. It come up with alternatives to the rocks, so that could be another aspect to, to utilize some of that eight hundred thousand dollars too, to set aside for that project as well. But I'm in full support of the roundabouts. I think it's a great idea, and thanks for bringing that up.
And Mr. Licorice, you preparing a package for me to start campaigning to get the eight hundred thousand dollars coming? When do you think we're gonna have that ready for?
I'll, I'll get with Bob and let you know. We'll, we'll get with you.
Okay. I've been, I've been talking to the state representatives, uh, I think, uh, I'm getting very good support on that. Yeah.
I don't wanna just jump in. Okay. I, all those things you just mentioned, I agree with, and, and we've been talking about signage and lighting and uplighting and, uh, beautifying for, for a long time now. So I definitely agree that not only downtown, but obviously on the docks too, uh, lighting and, and signage is needed, and, and it's something we've been discussing. So, uh, definitely, I feel like that's a priority. Um, so I just wanted to agree with you, Jacob.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the rest of the commissioners brought up, uh, most of the stuff I had my notes on, and they made some good points. Uh, the one thing I really do wanna stress as well is just, uh, I agree that the Sunset Beach sand replenishment should be a priority. Um, it, it needs to be done. Uh, but other than that, I, I think all my notes got, uh, got stolen, so I'm good.
Okay, call the police.
Yeah, again, just a reminder, some of those things were pulled off the list, not because we just had the cut list, but there may be some alternatives. For instance, the sand and the dredge do. So they're not all, you know, they do help, obviously, to, to bring us to a balanced budget, but some of them was pulled, 'cause we either hoped we'd have some money left over from, out of this year's budget to be able to use for them, or for instance, the sand, the, uh, option, that if there's something available, um, from that, then we might be able to use it. So some of them, Ron, hold hoping we can do also.
Are we finished with the CIP? Any other questions? Okay, the next item is number two, CRA budget. Ron?
Okay, CRA budget. I had a little presentation on that to go through. Uh, just to go over a little history of it, the CRA budget established in two thousand and one. Financing of a CRA is not to exceed thirty years. Financing from tick tax, tick tax increment financing. The TIF is from both the city and the county. The TIF is based on taxable value amount over the base year, which is two thousand. Base year value is forty-one million, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred. Annually, TIF amount over base year times millage rate to determine the annual CRA revenue. Uh, CRA budget details on pages one eighty-nine through page one ninety-three of the detailed budget book in the three-ring binder. Uh, the revenue highlights, the ci- the city TIF, uh, adjusted for the millage rate at five point three seven is two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine oh one. The county TIF portion would be two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight oh one. Interest earnings, two thousand dollars for a total of four hundred, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven oh two. Expenditure highlights, one point eight five positions funded out of the CRA, a hundred and three thousand, seven forty-one. Plan update is part of that, seventy-five thousand. Facade grants, sixty-four thousand, seven sixty-eight. Some other operating landscape maintenance items, seventy-three thousand, one ninety-three. Loan repayment to the water sewer fund, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, for total expenditures of four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven oh two. And just as noted below, the loan to be, will be fully repaid in two thousand and twenty-one with, with its last hundred thousand dollar repayment. And this last slide is just trying to show the, uh, the history from two, the actuals, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, the budget for two thousand nineteen, and the budget for two thousand twenties. The revenue's up top, uh, with the revenue totals, and then going down to the expenditures on the bottom. Um, breaking out by categories, personnel, operating capital, grants, loan repayments, and total expenditures. And then at the very bottom, I got fund balance end-of-year actuals, which in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, those are the actual fund balance. The projected, uh, fund balance at the end of two thousand nineteen on the bottom there is three hundred and twenty thousand, two seventy-one, and projected for, at the end of two thousand twenty, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, two seventy-one. And that's the end of my project, uh, presentation on the CRA.
Thank you.
And again, we know for the start, there's two, two main issues to discuss in here. We might as well jump to that, and we can get the other things. Um, the funding of the positions out of the CRA and the plan update funding. Um, obviously, there's talk about why do we fund it there? Um, we've always funded it there. Um, I believe that the money for those extra things should come out of the CRA. If we're looking for money to supplement the CRA in general fund, but I know Tom has substantiated, and I don't know if he got, has those figures for you. But again, you take a portion or whatever you take and move it in the general fund, you see on your worksheet right here what you have left in there. So theoretically, you wanna take fifty thousand, eighty thousand, and transfer it to the general fund. You see what it does to this other column there, 'cause it'll immediately be some of your extra money you plug in. And again, you know, when the docs always yells about, why do they get more down there? Why do they have the people working under some more? Well, the answer is because the CRA funds those positions, and that way they do. Remember, the CRA is a long area. Those CRA people do the landscaping and stuff, down the trail, um, they do all that stuff. So, and we knew when we got the hotel, we knew we were gonna have some lean years to do actual projects. The good news is that after this year, you see in the budget with a hundred and seventy-five, um, the last payment is a hundred. So you're immediately gonna have, I have another seventy-five thousand for your progress you want, because it'll only be a hundred, and then it goes away. We're almost paid for this. Hundred and seventy-five, we have to pay here, then a hundred in the next year's CRA, and that's done, and you'll have more projects to do. But, um, as far as the funding of it and the extra uses that do, I don't know if you want Tom to come up and talk about that. Um, um, he can. Tom, do you wanna come talk about the actual manpower, which is more than the one point eight five position? And expand a little bit of the things people don't see. It's not just the downtown. Um, that's why we have our portions of the trail maintenance so well. That's why we do other things, because you people spend the time down there and.
Yeah, we average about a hundred and twenty-three hours a week, actually, of manpower downtown. Uh, and a lot of the people don't say this. The parks people down there are doing the flowers and the cutting and stuff like that. Uh, we also have upkeep on bike racks, benches. We're constantly replacing benches, repairs. Uh, we do a lot of, uh, facility maintenance down there fairly often. I replace lightbulb, lightbulbs. Uh, we average about, uh, oh, probably about twenty hours a week with build maintenance down, doing decorative tree lighting, repairing our signs, replacement, pressure washing the buildings. Uh, sanitation's there every single day, seven days a week, uh, doing the garbage pickup all through town, so that's about fourteen hours a week. And of course, we sweep, uh, down there, and that's just labor alone. It's about five hours a week. So it averages about a hundred and twenty-three hours a week. Uh, we also do some other, other maintenance. It's not weekly. It's, uh, by the month. Uh, that includes, uh, uh, probably about a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty hours a, a, a month additional for, uh, other maintenance stuff, other repairs and stuff, uh, installing other lights. Uh, and then, of course, we have yearly stuff we do down there once a year. Uh, palm tree, uh, trimming. We do all the trimming in all the, uh, CRA area. Uh, Christmas decorations, that takes us about forty hours we put on there. Uh, and I've got another one, uh, cleaning, uh, street sweeping, uh, power washing the sidewalks. Uh, that's about a hundred and eighteen hours a year additional for those one, once-a-year projects we do.
Uh, so it's quite a few hours, uh, I think the average cost is about thirty bucks an hour per man, so it runs about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in labor costs without including materials and things like that. So it's quite a bit more than the budget there.
Well, I'm okay with the uh, have the one point eight five positions funded by the CRA, but also we need to uh, start thinking about the improvements we need to make on North Pinellas Avenue. I mean, these places really need to have them done. We need to do some work there. Now, I don't know if we're going to utilize the manpower that we have assigned there or we just, we need to, you know, find a different way, but it needs to have a lot of improvements there.
Well, we'll talk about that when it gets to my next one salary about the position, which again, we, we're gonna be adding plant, we're gonna be adding plants, we're gonna be adding things and we'll talk a little bit about it when we get to the, for the salary portion for that. We will be, we will be putting additional manpower out of the general fund there, that's what I'm asking for, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna cover that in the next, in the next item.
All right. And, and I'm glad that we maintained the facade grant, which is the uh, sixty-four point seven thousand dollars, so that's gonna be, I think we're getting close to uh, cover everybody, don't we Karen? Oh, we got way to go?
Lot more.
And I said, I just wanna bring those two things up because, I mean, I'll have Karen come up and tell her where, there's gonna be some differences we've got, we'll be definitely taking some money off this like Karen, but I wanna talk about the positions first and have the discussion there, cuz it's just, you know, I think that's where it needs to be funded and, and taken out of. If there's anything we ever wanna do down there with some extra money, then we, it'd be easier to find money from the general fund and do it there, but again, lights at the end of the tunnel with the amount we're paying, we've, we've, a lot of people don't realize, thinking we owe five, no, we don't, we have one more, one seventy-five payment and then a hundred thousand dollar payment and that's, that's, that's done, so.
Mm-huh. Okay.
Um.
Here's one.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about the loan repayment, that was for the uh, Sunday? Okay, gotcha. Um, so as far as the uh, positions funded out of the CRA, if that's where you're wanting to start the conversation, uh, Mr. City Manager, I don't have so much of an issue with that. To me, that's, you know, more of a, of a hard cost that we have to in, incur to, here, to incur to uh, you know, actually keep the CRA looking spick and span and looking pretty and to replant things in the trash hauling, so I mean, to me, that's, that's a hard expense that, that needs to be incurred, uh, and I don't have a problem doing so uh, proportionally out of the CRA fund, um, something that we've done for as long as I can remember. Um, like I said, it's a, it's a hard cost, so I mean, for the, for those positions, I don't have so much of an issue. When you're ready to move on to the plan update for seventy-five thousand, then I have more issue with that, so whenever you're ready to do that, let me know.
We wanna talk anymore about the positions or are there any issues with the?
No, I don't have any.
I would like to talk about it. Uh, just real quick, um, Tom, thanks for the update on that and I think the important thing is just to know that the staff members are actually being utilized within the CRA and not supplementing that in other parks, other parts of the roadways and things along those lines, because we could get a little more creative kn- knowing that there's one point eight five, I'm not sure who's point eight five of a person, but I'm sure they're, they'll figure out the other fifteen percent. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're utilizing these staff members well and to the fullest and you shared some good stats, but I think we could do better as a city with some more projects in the, in the CRA district and utilize these FTEs as well, so uh, I just wanna make sure that they're being utilized there. That was my biggest concern is that they're being funded, but not, they're not necessarily being utilized, but Tom was able to share that they are being utilized.
Well, in some cases, it's letting people know, for instance, when we did the work on the trail and we put it on, on our Facebook account, you know, we've been doing that and everybody says, oh, our portion, well, that's because our people are maintaining our CRA, but we're actually showing people, hey, we did these upgrades on Fa- so we also need to do a better job getting out to the public of these extra things that they're seeing and that's due to those people down there dedicated to the CRA that are, that are doing those. Believe me, the docs know because they want us to duplicate and stuff, I said, I'm sorry, we don't have that, you know, position. We do pull people from regular to go to the CRA, but not people from the CRA to go do.
So just think of it too, um, you notice the county, when it came around election time, um, last general election, when they was up for revote for the penny for Pinellas, you started seeing signs that popped up, project was penny for Pinellas, I'm not, I don't wanna see signs that say this is funded by the CRA, but it's good to educate the residents and the property owners that are within the CRA and that are also in town, say these are CRA funds funded by the CRA, et cetera, and that could be again in our quarterly update or something along those lines, like a, look what the CRA's updated this year, something along those lines, so. Thanks.
Karen, you wanna come up and? I just knew these were the top two issues, so then we can get to some other ones to get these.
I thought we had consensus on the plan update.
What do you want, consensus on the what, manpower?
I'm just saying, I thought we had consensus on the plan update at our last workshop.
Why don't you go ahead Karen, then we'll see what the?
The plan update?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the CRA plan update is, this is the only copy we have right now, this is the original um, CRA master plan, it's essentially a, a blueprint, your long-range comprehensive plan that outlines strategies, analysis, um, of all your redevelopment activities throughout the CRA. So this was done when the CRA was created back in two thousand. Um, it's not useful anymore, um, everything has changed from twenty years ago, so um, if we're gonna take our development to the next level, we need to update, update this to what the existing current conditions are, cuz this goes back to two thousand before we had our special area plan, uh, before we had our smart code zoning, um, before we've done a lot of the improvements that we've already made. It's not in compliance with our current zoning codes, with our land development code or with our comprehensive plan. So, um, this is something that uh, is important for the CRA to do because it really guides everything that you do within the CRA and a lot of the discussions tonight have been about beautification and signage and what, um, the scope of services for the, the update includes things like architectural and design standards, densities and intensities, um, an analysis of vacant land and some um, suggestions for reuse of that, recommendations for catalyst redevelopment projects, um, parking review and parking facilities, we've been talking about that for downtown. Um, public uses in open space, gateway enhancements, streetscaping, signage, and then any additional proposed incentives that could be done to facilitate the goals and objectives of the plan. Um, a lot of our land use has changed in the last twenty years, it would, it would be doing a complete parcel-by-parcel inventory of all the parcels within the CRA, there's, I think, seven hundred and some parcels, I'm looking at the residential uses, the commercial uses, um, uh, public uses, industrial uses, and making recommendations on all of those and saying, where are we today and where do we need to go? Um, this would help guide us for the next ten years of development, I think we've done a tremendous job since two thousand to get us where we are today, but if we really wanna take it to the next level, um, we need to get the plan updated. Um, I did us.
The key is the funding. Where, what have you got it down to what we can do, because obviously, the seventy-five thousand was a sticker shock to the board?
Okay.
So, to the bottom line of what, you know, what do you think? I know you got that by studying other people who've done, updated them in the area and stuff, where have you come to where, you know, what we can budget and still get a lot of the stuff done that we can do?
Okay, because it's been so long since we've done an update and typically, these aren't done like every five or ten years, I budgeted high, uh, for the seventy-five, I did a survey of CRAs throughout the state, um, some of them were local and got um, a ballpark figure, they ranged anywhere from twenty-five to eighty thousand dollars, so I budgeted on the high end cuz I knew this might take a lot. Um, since then, uh, you know, I've taken a look back at it and without a bid, I don't know what it's gonna come back at, but there are some things in the plan that we can um, take a look at eliminating, one is a, a transportation corridor analysis, that was recently done by Forward Pinellas on alternate nineteen, so perhaps that's something that we don't need. We can also do um, some of our, a lot of public workshops are involved in this and that takes up a lot of the budget as well, so we could do some in-house, um, staff here could do some of the public workshops, so with some of those other things I was looking at, uh, eliminating from this, we could bring it down to probably maybe about thirty-five thousand. But again, I won't know until we, we take it out for a, a bid. And just for reference, um, Dunedin was one of the cities that I talked to and they, their CRA was created in nineteen eighty-eight and they did their update in two thousand ten and that was a cost of thirty thousand. So that was ten years ago, but they had a very old plan at that time as well.
I think something that we need to do, you know? We need to. Budget thing. You ready?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, I don't necessarily disagree with the need to update our plan, it's just for me, a matter of number one, how we fund it and number two, what we select to update. I don't wanna just, I think as a board, we should have an idea of the type of updates to be done and then select from a list that we find value in the update, just like we just did on the, on the unfunded project and we went through a list and said, okay, we'd like to do that, we'd like to do that, we'd like to do that. To me, that's how we should approach this plan update, um, and I don't necessarily, and I would, and I would rather have whatever monies we, uh, or I would rather have the monies come for the plan update, not directly from the CRA, because I think that the CRA, let's say it's thirty-five grand, I would rather put that thirty-five grand on top of the sixty-five thousand for facade grants or restaurant recruitment grants or whatever other kind of grants that we can come up with that have been successful in the past that we can actually physically see and touch. So, that's kinda where, where my thinking is regarding not only the funding, but also how we approach the, the plan update. I don't wanna just say, okay, let's spend seventy-five grand on a plan update and not have any idea from the get-go what we're updating. I think that the commission should, should decide, as, since we sit as the CRA board, I think that we should decide on, you know, what is it we're updating and why we're spending that money there as it relates to a matter of importance. I mean, you know, that's my, my thinking and I, I mean, off the bat, I don't wanna spend the money out of the CRA. I mean, if it comes down in price, it might be more palatable, but generally, as a rule, I would rather spend that CRA money on bricks and mortar versus updating a plan that hasn't been updated since two thousand one and we seem to be doing okay and the CRA is only valid for another ten years to begin with, so that's kinda my thinking.
Yeah, I, I, I really, I agree with you, but at the same time, I think we have to have some kind of a roadmap to know where we're going and what the future should be with the CRA area. That's what the plan should be all about, you know?
We already have that roadmap, though. We're saying we're gonna update the roadmap.
Well, it's kinda updated, it's outdated, you know?
Right, so what's, as a matter of importance, what's important, what's important to you to update, though? We're just gonna say, update it?
Can we have a, a, a list of the, I know it's, it's a lot, but do you have a list of, of some of the things that we need to look at? I agree that it needs to be updated, uh, but how would we prioritize what to update according to?
Right now, we're just slotting the budget money for the budget to, for doing that, bringing back and doing everything the vice mayor says, we can bring or that's the way we can do the bid to have it priced out, I mean, there's, there's several different ways we can deal with that. All really, we're talking about tonight, are we gonna slot the thirty-five thousand dollar here, are we going, go to, go into this money here and say, we don't want, although it's for the CRA, I think that's what the CRA is for and the fund should come out of the CRA for it.
I agree with that.
If we're not gonna put it there, then we need to decide for budget purposes only, then it'll come out of this money on this side.
I agree that it should come out of the CRA.
But, but we can do every, we can talk about how we're going out.
Decide on a figure.
Yeah, we can talk about how we're doing now, right now, we're just looking at what to put budget-wise where.
I agree, uh, that it should come out of the CRA, um, I, I just was wondering what the figure is gonna be, because we have so many things that we wanna do with or, uh, that are not gonna be done or that we wanna be done with the general fund, so I, I agree that it should come out of the CRA, but I just don't know what the figure should be and we won't know that until we get a bid.
We meet at the CRA board and tell how you want us to go about going out the bid to get the prices of the different areas, sir, that would be a whole nother meeting and that would be your meeting as a CRA. This is as a commission, you have to, you know, to budget this money, you know, we're just talking about budgeting within the CRA here, so that's kinda what we're looking for tonight, but everything the vice mayor said, we could do.
I mean, my other thing, and I don't mean to jump in front of Commissioner Carr, but I mean, aren't we gonna have a in-depth discussion tomorrow about our planning services and isn't there some overlap related to this and what's being proposed?
The CRA is not, no.
None, none of the three things that we wanna update, the national register, none of that?
Those aren't on, those aren't on the CRA portion.
But is there no overlap there?
I don't thi-
In the email, it said that.
I don't think so. With the grant, with the, the, the two, that would be within the grant and stuff, that's not.
The highest and best use analysis was part of that, Forward Pinellas, that was part of the planning services, um, the CRA update plan was part of planning services, um, land development, there was a, a number of things that were
So there is overlap.
Part of the planning services contract, I believe.
But not what she's talking about going out to bid for, for, nothing that she's talking about going for bid for here.
Yeah, but she just said what we're gonna discuss tomorrow night is in part, part of highest and best use analysis, uh, historic district CRA, is it not?
But that's separate from, that's separate from updating the CRA plan.
Right.
But my point is that there's, if we're gonna update the CRA plan in one update and then we're gonna update things that are cumulative within the CRA through three other updates, I'm thinking that there's overlap in that, no?
The, this is an overall master plan, the historic district guidelines aren't, wouldn't be part of this update, um, and the highest best use analysis wouldn't be part of this update, we got the grant for that, so we're moving ahead with that. So there wouldn't be any, any overlap with what?
The update in the CRA would be, you said, dealing with densities and intensities, right?
It looks at what the current, it would update it, looking at what the current densities and intensities are, yes.
So in order to update
They have to, what they would.
Intensities, you gotta look at highest and best use.
They would look at what our current zoning code is, they look at a lot of the planning information to get you, um, what the current situation is in your city and your CRA by looking at current planning documents.
If I understand the vice mayor's question correctly, uh, these services are gonna be part of the planning consultant contract that is coming before you tomorrow night.
No, they're not.
They were part of the scope of services.
Yeah, they're not gonna be part of what we're bringing forward tomorrow night.
Oh.
As of a few minutes, they were evidently.
No, you got, you got the update, I sent you the, I sent you the email today to update that, that was taken, that, that was taken out of there.
There's so much going on with the planning services and, and what we're trying to do with consultants that it's hard to keep track of, to be honest with you, I mean, that email didn't come until late this afternoon to begin with, so I mean, but the procurement, director didn't know, you know, in a plan, so I mean, there's some overlap in what we're talking about, is my point, that's all.
So tonight, we're talking about a placeholder in this aspect, Commissioner Seaver talked about potentially supporting this as a CRA, she did talk about supporting on the CRA, Vice Mayor mentioned if it was a lower, it might be more palatable. Uh, from my standpoint as commissioner, I, I mean, I wouldn't be able to support anything greater than twenty-five thousand dollars out of the CRA for the placeholder today, it would be twenty to twenty-five thousand. Now, uh, Vice Mayor brought up a great point, Commissioner Seaver brought up a great point, let's see what the priorities are, because Karen, you brought up a great point as well, Forward Pinellas already completed a, um, a study, uh, the workshops with residents is something that we can do and, with staff, um, to save funds that we have salaried staff that are working with these workshops, so we don't have to pay a consultant to do this. So, how do we get creative with our current staff, which I believe is three planners and an economic developer and a seasoned city manager, right? So how do we figure this out in-house as well, as much as we can? So, overall, I think it's best to, to do what has been discussed already, game plan what the goals are, um, and then come back and say, well, this is what we really should do, we could get away with not updating this part of the plan, but from right now, I wouldn't put any more than twenty-five thousand dollars against it for this coming year's budget. We need to look at anything further, then we have further discussions, but that's what I feel comfortable with, seventy-five thousand's too much in my perspective. Thanks.
Uh, I, I agree with that completely, actually, when I first looked at this, um, I just can't justify spending more, talking about what we plan to do than we actually are on facade grants. Um, so yeah, I'd like to see, uh, section by section and see how much we can do in-house and see what we wanna prioritize and how we wanna prioritize it, but just for the sake of budgeting, seventy-five thousand dollars to me is way too high. Um, I wanted to see it lowered and twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot lower, so I'm, I'm good with that number as well. so I'm, I'm good with that number as well, as a placeholder.
I mean, we can, we can actually budget whatever nobody would like, but that doesn't mean even if it's seventy-five thousand dollars, we're going to spend seventy-five thousand dollars. You know? Karen, is there any way that you can bring it back and, and in more detail, the things that we need and how to spend it?
Yes, there's statutory requirements that your plan has to have, that our current plan doesn't have. So, those are things I can bring back. I can bring you back the scope of work that we put together. You can take a look at all of those things. The county is requiring plans now to be updated and to be relevant to, to what you're doing. So, that's one of the reasons that's prompting this. There was a state audit of CRAs that was conducted a couple of years ago. And in Pinellas County, one of the recommendations that came out of there is that the county take more proactive approach with overseeing the CRAs. They've been kind of hands-off. So they've done a number of different items to address that recommendation, including new and updated reporting requirements of CRAs, uniform reporting requirements. Right now, those CRAs are reporting various different types of budget information. They want it all to be the same. They're going to be doing site visits to see what our projects are, and they're requiring the, again, the, the plans to be relevant and updated. So, you know, we'd like to remain in compliance with all of those things, both from the state and the county levels.
But from the standpoint of the budget now and stuff, I would be fine with a twenty-five thousand dollar placeholder. Bring all that back to you as suggested here and do that in time. But attention now is to the, the budget, so. If that's the consensus, we can change that, and then see what comes, and what other money needs, we'll decide where that money would come from. If you decide there are things that you, that we need to get done, and there's more money needed, then we go back in and find the money.
Well, I just feel that we don't necessarily have the manpower to do this ourselves. They already are doing so much in that department, or in those departments. So, I don't know that twenty-five thousand is going to be enough. I mean, if we budget thirty-five thousand, we come under, I, I feel like, you know, we're fine with that. But just limiting it to twenty-five thousand, and not being able to do it in-house, and, and having to come back and, and get more money, I think is, is not necessarily the way to go. So I would, I would increase it to at least thirty-five thousand.
Ron, can we, can you please, hold for a second? What happens if we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars, and we need the state thirty-five? Where the other ten thousand dollars will come from?
Well, if you don't want to do that-
That's up to you.
Huh?
Well, you know, if it's not the CRA, unless you want the balance to become out of the general fund.
Well, the money's available, though.
Right.
Yes, there is money, I mean, if it goes over, and yeah, there is money available in the CRA fund.
CRA fund, so either we do it now, or we do it later, it really makes a difference. Yeah.
Just in regard to, Karen made a comment about the county requirements, and I was just going to ask if there's any timeframe as it relates to those requirements to come and to update your plan?
They have not yet. We've been talking about them this year, and they formed a working group, and we've been meeting. So they don't have, the first site visits, I believe, will be starting later this fall. So probably some-
There's no timeframe requirement?
They don't have a timeframe for it now, no.
So, again, it goes back to like, are you going to update the whole plan, or aspects of the plan that need to be updated? So I'd like to see what we're going to update. And as it relates to this board, what's most important, or we're not in compliance here, so we need to do this. But I mean, to your point, Mayor, the money's, the money's there. If you need an extra ten, you can just go get it.
Yeah. So we can reduce that to twenty-five thousand dollars to have our consensus? And we, if we need more money, we can always get that developed. So we have a starting point. Is that okay with you?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Hmm?
Yes.
Those are those two items, so anything else, and I just want to get those out of the way, and now we can go on to anything, anything else within the CRAs you want.
Earlier, I, I spoke about the North Pinellas Avenue. We need, do we have, we need to budget some money for that. We need to update that, we need to bring it up. I mean, it looks terrible. What do we need to do to do this?
We're, we're, we're working on that. We're trying to, we're trying to, thanks, thanks to, some information we got, we're trying to see about reclassification of the corridor. We're trying to do some things, we're, we're trying to work on dealing with FDOT. There's a lot of things in the world, we're, we're hoping to bring something back with you. We, we know what the problems are, we know what we want to do. We're in the working stages with several different degrees of, of government with Ford Pinellas, with FDOT. So, as soon as we can, we're hoping to bring back a plan for, for North Pinellas and work on. We just don't have it at this time, and won't have it.
Do we need to budget anything for that right there? Or not?
I just, I, I just think right now, we're just too many unknowns to try to do, to try to do that with. That's one of the, remember, the budget is a dynamic that goes throughout the year. So what this budget is in October, if something came together where we could do something in the north corridor and stuff, we have to go in there and either put a project back, work on doing some things. But, you know, the budget is year-round, you don't finalize, it won't finalize, and we can do things. So if something comes back in there, we may need to look later to rearrange projects. But I'm just not close enough to seeing what we can do, or what we're going to be allowed to do. We're, we're getting closer.
Issue is the tree wells, Mayor.
Yeah?
The issue is the existing tree wells, right? So the DOT won't let us adjust the tree well unless potentially we reclassify the corridor to something, you know, with a different title, that essentially would give us broader scope and the dimensions of the tree wells, how close they can be to the street. But until we reclass, potentially reclassify the corridor, then, you know, our hands are essentially tied as of right now.
Now, we are do-
You're absolutely right, we need to do something about it.
We are doing, you know, we are working on some baskets, some landscaping. We got some information we'll hopefully be bringing you in the coming weeks, um, with some landowners that the commission's working on, to, to finally get some agreements on some of the private property to do. So, believe me, that's on the top of our, our working list on North Pinellas, and, but we just don't have enough knowledge to give you anything concrete to do for budget right now.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Can you, see, Manas, can you remind me where the CRA stops going up North Pinellas? What road it stops at?
Which point?
North?
North, it stops, um, help me out.
Karen, is she still around?
At?
It stops at the bridge.
It stops at the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it goes down to Mears on the south.
The CRA or the special area? I thought the CRA was a little smaller.
The C, no, it goes from Mears on the south.
I thought it was the Deacones Boulevard.
Up to, right, up to the bridge, up to Deacones.
Yeah, it was the Deacones Boulevard, intersection, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, plenty of space.
Yeah.
A, a few things I want to, I want to bring up about the CRA, thank you for clarifying that, is, okay, I've got a list here. So, we talked about lighting before in the last Capitol discussion. So, we see the lighting of our Hibiscus, I know that was one of the Edison bulbs that went over Hibiscus, that helped bring attention to the cafes down that area, and that was one of the most well-liked posts on the city's Facebook page, I think. Double, almost double than anything else. So a couple of ideas that I had is to extend that lighting, potentially in between Tuscan Sun and the tavern and the alley area there. And if it could be continued down to Hibiscus as well, just to bring some more lighting in that alley area. I'm not really sure how that would work in that, in that alley area, but just to, to throw some discussion points out, to get our minds thinking a little bit. Safford over the bike trail as well, and certain parts of the bike trail in downtown, if it's in front of Tula's, or if it's in front of Neptune's, or if it's on the north side, that's in front of, from Sun Trust, north to Orange Street. Again, it just brings the aesthetics part, it has more of an ambiance that, there's sidewalk cafes, there's, there's a need, I think, that people really like it. Also, ring in between, I don't know the name of the business right now, Johnny Tap House and the new building where the old barbecue restaurant was. I know it's a trucking area, so we had to get creative with some creative poles of some type of historic pole. But to do some lighting along that area too, as well. And then, again, to touch base on the lighting, the trees, it would be along Tarpon Avenue, Mother Mears parking lot, Orange Street, and then the new parking lot as well, where we could find some uplighting for the trees, and also some decorative lighting. Additional signage is important within the CRA, that's something that's been discussed now for the past couple of years. If there's additional signing, signage off the bike trail, where it points out the boutiques or breweries. Something that I think would be pretty creative, and it's been discussed in the past, if we're out on the board, is looking at a arch sign that goes over the road. I think the last time it was proposed, it was proposed to go over Tarpon Avenue, but I would like to propose that to go over the bike trail in Safford, in between Currents and the, the train station. Similar to what you may see in Dunedin, where it's an old powder-coated sign, it mimics some type of railroad crossing, where you have the historic railroad trail, where the trail is laying. Does that make sense?
You're saying the old railroad arm that we discussed going over Tarpon Avenue in front of the train depot, you just want it to be on the face of the other corner?
Move it over the bike trail, because there's concerns about the roadway, the way the roadway goes up, and then also the crosswalks that, the traffic that runs east and west on Tarpon Avenue, it goes too fast, and it's not a four-way stop, so they can not see the pedestrians. But if it's put over the bike trail, there's four ways, or there's a two-way stop going north and south, and then we wouldn't, I don't think we'd have the same issues that direction. So, a couple more things here about the CRA, and again, it's just getting creative with the properties that we have now, and the areas that we have. Is the Forbes property, again, this has been for about ten years plus, I believe the city, or the CRA has owned this property. I think it's time to remove the fence and add some grass, and also print some large pictures of the historic, historic downtown, and put on some poles in that area. Also install another sign in the front of the property that shows that the CRA is actively looking to sell this property, with some ideas of what it could look like, install a couple of large potted palms, and then also, how are we marketing this property continually? Be some questions I would ask. Again, if we put some grass there, just to get some green space, but still let the residents know, let the area know that we're looking to redevelop this piece of property is an important part. One of the things, too, I think would be a good idea, is to talk to Mr. Kukulakas. He's got a plan for the property that's on Ring Street and Orange, to build some type of townhomes. But currently, it's sitting as an empty lot. There's a need for more parking still in downtown, but this could be an opportunity where we go to, go to Mr. Kukulakas and ask him if we could lease the property from the CRA perspective, for additional parking. When events are happening downtown, it's very limited, it's hard to get around, it's hard to find a spot. So if we can put crush shell out in that piece of property and add another thirty, forty spots, I think it would be rewarding to all the property owners within downtown. Again, these are just ideas that I'm trying to get out there for discussions, and I think that we could run with some of these for two thousand and twenty. A couple of them that, that might be the bigger ideas that we have to get a little more creative about. One is obviously a parking garage. I think it would be a good idea to allocate money this year and the following years to a parking garage, at least to a, a set fund within the CRA, to say, we're allocating this hundred and thousand dollars in twenty-twenty to a, a parking garage. The following year, allocating two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or something along those lines. I don't really know how we could get creative with putting a parking garage in place, but I think it's a good idea to at least start putting some money away now within the CRA, and then also look at penny fund in the future as well. And this one might be the most stretch, but I think it's something that we should be evaluated and at least looked at. Safford and Tarpon Ave is a unique, how would I say, a very unique slash dangerous intersection with the bike trail. And then you've got cars going north and south on Safford, and you've got a, a pretty good east-west traffic on Tarpon Avenue. So, I would like to at least evaluate this, and look at it from a green space perspective. So I'm going to talk about four different spots along Safford Avenue. The first one is Tarpon Avenue, south to Court Street. That goes along the train depot, and to where the Court Street comes out onto Safford Ave. It would be taking that portion of road and making a green space out of it. And I would propose four green spaces along Safford. That would be Tarpon Ave, south to Court Street. Then you go from Lemon Street, north, that's along Pinellas Auto, in front of Neptune's, in front of Tula's, and the next to Currents. So Lemon to north, Tarpon Avenue. And then, when you go across the street, you would go from Tarpon Avenue to the Sun Trust exit. And on the other side, you'd go from Orange Street, south to Tarpon Avenue. And then, this would really address the issues that we have at this intersection. To me, it's a dangerous intersection, and there's still a need to have more green space within downtown Tarpon. It goes along the bike trail, it also allows outflow for the Court Street. The traffic allows outflow from Sun Trust, and then the adjoining properties that have driveways that go through there. And it also then creates more of a green space for when people are traveling on the trail to stop in downtown and, and rest, and it can create some more trees if we need to as well. So, that one's maybe the most far-stretch idea, but I think it could be something that would be rewarding to downtown, for trying to find a green space somewhere in downtown, if it was the Mother's Mears parking lot, or if it's along Safford Avenue. I'm not really sure, but it seems to be a good meeting spot to that area. And then lastly, I would like to know, how are we marketing the old Sun Bay property? And that kind of falls into the Forbes property as well. As a city's perspective, are we reaching out to prospective developers still to, to market Forbes property and the Sun Bay property? That's it. That was a little fast, I know.
You want to answer that? What, how we marketing the Sun Bay? Are you ready to answer that, or you want to do another?
Well, again, we've, we're nine, we're still into the budget portions, though.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to the board.
So that's going to be my follow-up, I guess? You know, there's a lot of questions that you have. What I would suggest is, if you just, all these questions that you have, you put them on an email, and that way we can address them, because there's so many of them. And, and I know a city manager is not going to have all the data that you're looking for right now. But it's good questions, though. I mean, we should have.
So Mayor, from a perspective, though, I think talking about a consensus from a parking garage might be a good idea to start with. There's obviously a need for more parking, and then if the push is to have more development downtown, this is an area of Tarpon Springs where it could be utilizing a CRA funds. And you mentioned, I believe, last meeting, that a need for a parking garage, where it could use penny funds, CRA funds, and potentially other funds as well to, to do a joint project. But to actually start setting funds aside today will help see that dream come to fruition for the board, I think.
Yeah. Commission Carr, I, I agree with you. I was going to leave that to the end, but this is a good time to talk about now. The CR, the CR, CAP, new projects, it's five, it's a five-year plan. And this is one of the things that I was going to, to present, and I was looking for the consensus of the board, to have a parking garage. Because I don't think the CRA funds are going to be enough for a big project like that.
They won't.
I, I can see it will contribute some, but not, you know, I think it's going to be a big project. So I think the CAP should be the financial support for that. And we need to put that on the, on the five-year plan, and, and, you know, and work with that. If I have consensus, if we have consensus on the board.
I think it's time to put it on the five-year plan.
Five-year plan? Are you, you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, let me see.
I agree.
Let me see what you have of it, okay. Since we're talking about that, another, another project that I think should be on the five-year plan is to have a, a bow ramp with parking recreation. The, the bow ramp that we have on Spring, on, on the South Spring Boulevard is not doing it. When it was built, it was only for small boats. Now, I remember sixteen footer, seventeen footer was the common boat. Now you have twenty-six footer. So we need to have a bow ramp with parking in, in some place near the, on the river where it'll be, the water's deep enough for those big boats. So, this is a, something we need to include it into the, into the plan, the five-year plan.
I agree with that.
Yeah?
I agree with that.
Definitely.
Okay, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd want to see more details on it, but yeah, I agree that we need it.
Well, you put that on the plan, and then you're working on the details, yeah. Another thing is a senior center. That's also that needs to be placed there on the uh, um, on the five-year plan. In my opinion, I think we have many seniors, they need a place where they can actually gather. Uh, I don't know what the price stack would be, something like that. I know Mr. Licur has had a, uh, an idea. Uh, how can we accomplish that with not as much, not too expensive? Uh, you wanna go? You wanna talk about this now or just wait till later?
Let me just say about the five-year plan. We've got, if, if you look at the penny and also as I said with the CRA. Um, this budget that we're working on now, you know, finishes up a lot of things. And we have creative money going out after this budget we're trying to do now. Um, to look at all these things. By the time you get through to your list, we're gonna be to ten million dollars on our, you know, but we got a lot of time to, to sit there. Talk about five-year plans, talk about how to work them in, um, you know, talk about all of those things. But again, that's something we need to lay out and, and those monies are gonna be coming available. Uh, not in this budget coming up, but in the budget coming half a year. Again, if you look at the bottom, just look at the bottom line of, of the penny for Pinellas one. And you see that number start out after this budget, the next year at about two million, then it goes up to three. So you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of money in there to plan your, your five, your five years and that's gonna take probably workshops and a lot of time to do. Um, but none of those things unless you wanted to start them and you don't have much room. When we're going back to our, to our sheets and stuff, we don't have room to start any of those. In this budget, we're trying to finish up now and get going and stuff, but we need to have extensive talking. Because a lot of the things we're finishing up in this penny, penny for Pinellas budget has been things either budgeted or planned. Five, six, when you were first the commissioner before, a lot of these things are going up. So we have a lot of things to get on that list of those years and stuff, but you know, I really think we need to concentrate now in, in what's gonna be in this budget. For, to, to do, because we're already on the second budget meeting and we're. Not, not in twenty, but those are all slotted into those things.
I, I agree with you. This is what we're gonna concentrate on, but you have to have a plan of what you're going to do for the five years.
But I don't see any of those in this budget we're talking about tonight.
No.
Mayor, I've got a question about the CRA, if I could come back to that. Um, do you mind? Uh, there's just two other items I wanna talk about. So lighting with the trees along Tarpon Ave and Mother's Mirrors. And that was something that was discussed and another item that wasn't funded yet. Um, this could be something that's funded with partial CRA funds and also. Unassigned, um, not reserve funds, but unassigned capital funds. So I know that was a discussion that the board came to consensus on earlier. I wanna talk about another one real quick is the arch over um, the, were you here, were you here when I talked about that? I talked about, um, the board before I was elected, talked about at one point putting an arch over Tarpon Avenue. That said like, tart, welcome to Tarpon Springs or something along those lines, but I believe it wasn't recommended by the, by the police at the time. Because it said, your eyes are distracted to go to that and it's, um, it could help, it could tend, it could uh. Cause pedestrian safety to go down or something along those lines. So what I would like to propose is doing one of those arches over Safford Avenue and the bike trail on the south side in between. The um. Train station and currents. So that could be an opportunity. To me, I think it's a good opportunity to use. Because what's, remember what the CRA is designed for. It's designed to remove blighted properties and beautify the area. Um, to me, that's a beautification project that we would be able to use and it's actually a bricks and mortar type, although it would be metal. Um, it's a permanent thing that would last for many, many years, right? So those are a couple of items I think could help beautify the CRA as a whole would be the lighting in the trees and also that additional archway that would. Go over the bike trail. You could have a sign both directions. That talk about historic Tarpon Springs and also welcome to Tarpon Springs or downtown when you're coming in the bike trail as well, so. Um, I'm not sure if there's a consensus on that, but these are two items that would be relatively easy, I think, to put together. Uh, with some of the funds that are available today still left in the CRA budget.
Well, again, and what I would do after tonight's meeting, from what I heard, obviously with twenty-five thousand. That we're budgeting right now to do the study and stuff, there's fifty thousand for miscellaneous projects. And that, you know, we're plenty of time to talk about what it is for, but for budget purposes, purposes, there's, there's fifty thousand there. For any project you decide and we come to the consensus to do during the next budget year.
We still have another four hundred and something thousand dollars left at the end though, right?
Mayor, if we move down the agenda on items that are pertinent tonight.
Yeah.
No offense, Commissioner.
No, I think there's two other, there's two other commissioners I think that need to speak about the CRA still.
Uh, well, I feel like we need to stick with the agenda right now and, and those things that we can talk about in the future, but. Let's continue with the budget at this point.
I, I agree with you.
Uh, I'm, I mean, um, we did just kinda go on a thirty-minute tangent. I know we gotta draw the line somewhere and get down the, the agenda, but I think. Uh, Commissioner Carr, correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but you were just asking for a consensus on, on the um, the two points that you brought up. At, at least for, for right now, could we get consensus on it?
I think.
Yeah, there isn't a CRA.
Plan, uh, is, is that what you were asking?
I'm sorry?
For the five-year plan, a consensus on the.
No, 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 it wasn't five-year plan. This was all CRA stuff.
Oh, no, because we talked about the garage, the parking garage.
The parking garage is, that, that got contributed with the five-year plan, but I was talking about the CRA as a specific with the archway and the lighting in the trees. So that's why I was trying to.
Okay, so we uh, we, we dedicated twenty-five thousand dollars to uh, to update the plan. That leaves us the uh, you know, fifty thousand dollars.
For projects, that, that's how I'd have it listed in your next budget.
Let's continue on, on with that. Okay. Are we uh, I think that we'll finish up the CRA, correct? No?
No, I'm done.
You're done? Okay, if everybody's done. Oh, good. Thank you. Uh, next item is the salaries.
Luckily, this one's hopefully gonna be fast this year. Again, as Ron's getting the program, um, a lot of things you've seen in the last budget years. As far as salary go, there's been a lot of grade changes. There's been a lot of, of upgrade. We've been really getting departments where we needed to go. Um, you'll see the only thing different that you're gonna see, well, you'll see my presentation of what I wanna do for the raises. But you're also gonna see the only real developments that we're gonna do. Obviously, last year, we completed and I think we had twenty items on it. We had a lot of items of reclasses, regrading and stuff. The only thing was left was the building department, which we wanted to get our new building director. Um, the year to look at the operation, see what he needs. So when we get to that portion, the only thing we're dealing with is, is those. Um, items from him that we'll do, but I'll let him go through the, the normal stuff you see every year. Um, go through that for the salaries and then we'll go back to the individual things.
Okay, yeah, I've got a, you know, a brief couple of slides here. Uh, starting out with a salary increase is funded in the two thousand twenty budget at three percent with benefits for the general employees. Police and fire union increases funded based on their union contracts. Uh, the total city funding with benefits comes to four hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred and twenty dollars. The reclassification of the three positions funded comes to fourteen thousand, four sixty-six. That includes benefits. Uh, there could be some lump, some payments funded for seven employees that are close to topping out. That's seven thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. One new tech two position for the parks department, forty-three thousand, one eighty-six. And charter positions are funded within the three percent increase. Uh, how the pay increases, if you're currently making between twelve dollars an hour to thirteen twenty-five would be a six percent increase. Thirteen twenty-five oh one to fourteen thirty forty-five, a five percent increase. Fourteen thirty forty-six to sixteen fifty-five fifty-one, a four percent increase. Uh, sixteen five fifty-two to eighteen two five five two, a three-point-five percent increase. And above eighteen point two five five three, a three percent increase. And this slide just trying to show how many people are getting each uh, like six percent increase. We got sixteen people, employees. Five percent fourteen, four percent thirty-six. Three-point-five percent twenty-two employees and a hundred and twenty-four employees make, getting a three percent increase. And down below in yellow, just wanted to highlight the number of full-time employees making under fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, in fiscal year two thousand twenty, we will have fourteen and just to compare back to two thousand fourteen, we had eighty. So we've decreased it by sixty-six employees. And that is my last slide on the salaries.
Basically, on the salaries, what we're talking about, again, we, you've seen this plan that these graduate raises the last four years, I think. Um, to move the lower salaries up. We budgeted three percent as a whole for the city. What this costs with paying benefits is only twenty-two thousand dollars to bring these lower salaries up. You're not talking about that big of an increase from the three percent average we're doing. It looks like a lot of people, but it's not, it's not a lot. We're trying to get to that livable wage. Um, after we put this in place, our starting employee, um, lowest start employee will be twelve seventy-two an hour. And again, we're doing it in such a way so there's not compression. Too many of the cities that are trying to bump up and get to the. Mysteri- you know, the, the norm out there to fifteen dollars an hour. A lot of them are moving their salaries, but they're not handling the compression. Of the people who are there in higher salaries. Um, why we've been doing this gradual way, this gradual way of doing it is. Plus, it's not a lot of money every year to do it gradually. And as you see, as we continue to do it, we'll be up to that level in no time and this plan, for instance, only costs twenty-two thousand dollars above what we said for three percent average. So it's a three percent average for everybody in the city, um, along with twenty-two thousand dollars to bring those people on the bottom end of the salary. Up and to not compress on the thing. These were done with everybody where their salary was, where these breaks. If you ask what's the significance of where it's broke, it's some breaks we had between employees where it wouldn't compress on them. So we're kinda looking for the breaking points where you can move it up and not compress. So pretty much it's, it's, it's a good method to bring those lower salaries up and it was not costly. Um. As far as I think on the sheet that you have here that, uh, this comes back to commit, remember I bring this to a regular commission meeting, which will probably be the set. When I bring the salaries and the regrades and stuff, that has to be done at a regular commission meeting. So this is all coming back to you at a regular commission meeting. That's why I go over fast, cuz you've got another chance at the, at me when we come and bring that forward. So we can have more discussions if you have then. Um, and uh, you know, we can wait and have discussion with the building director then. Because it has to come back to a regular board meeting or you can do it real fast now. But the re-classifications are, are within his division and where, what titles and what he needs within there. The only additional position is because one of the positions that's been working assisting building was Tom's. And the one only additional position we got on there is a tech two in the parks division. And that person's exclusively to deal with the amount of plantings and beautifications that we need um, in the parks division. So, so that is the person to, to, to go um, keep our plant, the expansion of the plants. And shrubbery and uh, the pots that we're gonna hang, that's strictly a person we have to need, cuz we do not have the people within. Uh, to do that, part of the person, uh, uh, Kevin's taken over in his division was assisting with some of that. Along with being the arborist, along with doing the projects. We're giving him that position, so we're gonna have exclusively one position, which is the new position. To be actually dealing with all the beautification and plants we did and that, that's all there is in the regrading classifications. As I said, last year is probably seventeen of them. There's only those in the building department again. Um, he can explain all of those to you, but since this has to come back to a commission meeting and do, uh, he can do it then instead of now and the sake of time if you want. It's up to the board.
Well, Mark, you're using the same method as we did in the past to bring all the people.
Exact same method.
Uh, we, I'm, I'm okay with that. Uh, the only classifications that you have is uh, on, I don't know, three and number five that are. I'll probably need a little bit more explanation why we need that. Uh, if you wanna go ahead and do this now or you wait till the, the regular meeting.
You can do either way, it's the will of the board.
You know, it's getting pretty late, so we can.
And again, this I, this I, this has to come to a regular board meeting for you to approve, so it'll be coming back to you. Um, either the, either the second meeting in August or first meeting in September.
Unless you wanna spend about five, ten minutes and explain that.
He can do a five, five or ten minutes if you want. It's up to you.
I, I have several questions too and I don't really wanna take the time tonight, I think. Because I did have some questions about some reclassifications other than what we have listed here.
Okay.
Uh, which probably will come back to the board and I, I was also gonna question something in cultural services, so. I don't know if we wanna do this now or I'll discuss it with you, Mark and uh.
No. But tentatively, I planned that, remember, I'm used to one. Um, um, if I did, if we did have to have another one, I would say it'd be a workshop after the second commission. After the next commission meeting, it'd be a workshop after there, um, as the days go by.
I don't wanna speak out of turn, but we've covered a lot of material tonight and have a lot of things that we have agreed upon through consensus. So it might be beneficial for the board to have one more workshop to see some of the revisions that we've requested and finalize whatever there is. But I mean. Generally, we don't have as much discussion or as many things that we've either taken from the budget or added to or whatever, so it might be productive. To see it one more time as a whole, as it all comes back. You took this from here, switched that from there and then finalized, but that's also at the will of the board, I mean.
We can always do it right after the uh, the regular meeting if we have, if we have.
That would be one agenda. Unless you want another night.
You better run to like ten-thirty.
Yeah, you better make it a seven.
Seven, nine, okay, we can do that.
I'm okay with.
I mean, you know, there's not gonna be as much material to cover, right?
Hopefully.
This is an important thing, so I'm happy to, to do a, a good summary of it before it comes before us in a commission meeting. I think it's a pretty good idea to do that. From the staffing standpoint, um, it might be best for all of us to connect with you, Mark, just to get a better understanding of what's going on and a little more in-depth. One-on-one instead of a setting where we're at now.
And again, they're, they're all related to the changes in the, in the building, so, so Kevin's also a good one to talk to, cuz all the, I mean. We did almost every other department the last three years. We did almost every department, the reorgs, reclasses and everything, so. He was the one left. We wanted to get, we wanted to give him the time to.
I think we still should, it's a matter of whether we do it tonight.
Right.
You wanna just give us an overview, what you, what, what you plan to do?
Sure.
The fast version.
The fast version.
And then, like I say, we're coming back to, to a regular meeting and stuff and then we can give the answer questions.
But we're, we're gonna do one more budget workshop.
Okay, so a, a couple of position changes, uh, or retitling um, of positions. Some of them are pretty simple. It's just changing the name from Development Services to Building Development Department. Since Building Development Services no longer exist. So we've got uh, two positions that are just really a title change. Uh, out of those, I've got uh, one of the permit techs that I'm moving up to a lead permit tech. Which would be a, a permit tech number two and the other two positions would be a permit tech one. That have no change to them in, in uh, pay. Um, the uh, the old Development Services Coordinator position. Is gonna be changed to the floodplain coordinator. A very important position within the department is the floodplain coordinator. Uh, they're the ones uh, who is overseeing all of our floodplain management and uh, assisting in lowering our score. Which they have done um, for our uh, CRS points. Um, we're just waiting on the official letter from FEMA to come in. However, they are saying that uh. Uh, there's some special NFIP insurance agent manual. I don't know if that's something that Commissioner Donovan is aware of. Uh, that can look at that and see what our new rating is uh, prior to that coming. So with, with that position, that would dedicate more time to the flood insurance program. Uh, and assisting in lowering that score even further than we are. And uh, being able to uh, spend more time and uh, more attention to detail on projects that are coming in. And uh, making sure that uh, they're aware of the, the flood area that they're in and the requirements of the building code. And, and the uh, FEMA guidelines. And the other one is uh, the arborist has been in our department working uh, with us. Uh, moving that position over there full-time and becoming the municipal arborist. Uh, taking on that role along with the um, environmental uh, silt fence and erosion control. Uh, bear, uh, barriers of trees for new construction projects. Uh, pretty much overseeing uh, tree bank funds and city projects as far as uh, uh, tree, tree placement. And, and plantings and stuff. So that's really kinda the quick uh, overbrief of, of what I've uh, proposed to do in the department.
Kevin, it shows that uh, there's a big jump on uh, from grade fourteen, um, excuse me, from grade eight to grade fourteen.
Yes.
Comparable to the.
It is comparable. It's actually a, a little under uh, about. Uh, maybe a pay grade under of what you would get in Dunedin or Safety Harbor or one of those. So I did look at the surrounding areas for what a, a city arborist or municipal arborist or urban forester. Uh, makes in the area. Uh, she also. Uh, makes in the area. Uh, she also, uh, uh, does our erosion control. Uh, make sure that those are in place and also she's our, our drone pilot too, so. All of the projects that we have with the drones, she's flying that also. So she's got an expanded role as, as more than just an arborist, but yes, it is comparable to the surrounding communities.
Any question? Thank you, Kevin. And number four is if we have any follow-ups from July sixteen work session. I think one of the follow-ups we had was the, uh, uh, the overtime of, uh, police department and fire department that was already discussed. Any questions for that?
I met with both chiefs.
I had to.
Yeah, received detailed information about both of them, uh, and, um, I'm in su- support as is the budget advisory board was in support. Of, uh, the overtime. It is a big number, um, from just sticker shock, but after going into detail about the need and how it all works and state statutes and other requirements involved. Uh, I'm able to get behind that and support it.
Any other comments, questions? Think, uh, that's all we got. Ron.
Ron, you have something else?
Uh, we just wanted to give you an update on the budget from the, the one you saw on, um. Sept- on July sixteenth to today. Uh, total city budget proposed back in, on July sixteenth was sixty-three million, nine sixty-two, three seventy and currently it's. On August twelfth, it's sixty-three million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, forty-four dollars, a decrease of a hundred and sixteen thousand, three twenty-six. And just wanted to go over the main reasons for the, uh, the decrease. Uh, health insurance, we budgeted ten percent increase. It's currently coming in at nine percent, so in the green on the right, it's a thirty-five thousand, four eighty-one decrease. Dental insurance, we budgeted a ten percent estimate. Actual increase is three point nine percent, so it's a decrease of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Life insurance, so there was no increase, but there was a plan change, uh, going from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. So it's an increase in the yellow of twenty-three thousand, two fifty-six. Uh, biggest surprise was workers' compensation. We did budget an increase of ten percent. Actual is a de- decrease of fifteen point seven percent, so we've got a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight sixty of a decrease. Uh, from what we budgeted originally for workers' comp. And then down below, we've got the, uh, technician two position, uh, funded at forty-three, forty-three thousand, one eighty-six. The reclassification where we're talking about the three positions, salary and benefits, uh, fourteen thousand, four sixty-six. Uh, the scanner was removed from the city clerk department, uh, ten thousand and the general fund available amount of money went up. Two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three, I mean, yeah, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And that's the total expenditure changes from the previous work session to now. And just to show the revenues, how it affected the revenues, uh, the general fund, uh, de- decreases seventy-seven, seven ninety-five, mostly the property tax, eighty-eight thousand, seven ninety-five. And some other revenue adjustments, eleven thousand. And then just going down the line, the safer grant, the CRA fund, sanitation fund, water and sewer fund, Marina Fund. All the way down to the bottom, the, the same number as expenditures, the revenue adjustments of a hundred and sixteen thousand, three twenty-six. And the last slide, just concentrating on the general fund expenditure revenue adjustments from July sixteenth to now. The general fund portion, health insurance decreased thirty-two thousand, eight twenty-one, dental insurance decreased five thousand, eight ninety. Life insurance increased fourteen thousand, eight forty-nine. Workers' compensation decreased a hundred and eight thousand, eight twenty-two, new position and the parks, forty-three thousand, one eighty-six. The reclassification of those three positions are in the general fund, fourteen thousand, four sixty-six. The millage rate decreased from five point four two to five point three seven, eighty-eight thousand, seven ninety-five, some other revenue adjustments, eleven thousand. And the net expenditure and revenue adjustments of twenty-seven sixty-three, which I added on to the general fund available balance we had in. July sixteenth of a hundred and twenty thousand, oh fifty-three. Leaves a general fund available balance on August twelfth of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight sixteen. And that's my last slide on that. Just giving you an update on, from the previous session to this one where we are currently, total city and a general fund there.
Commissioner.
Yes, uh, I was unfortunately not able to make that last session. Uh, was that, uh, millage rates decrease decided?
It's just proposed.
Oh, proposed, okay, because I, I had a question about that.
Okay.
Any other comment?
I, I've, I got a comment, Mayor. Um, during the last work session, um, I had asked Ron about our grants and aid budget. Um, which is just donations we make to nonprofits within our community, um, that sort of thing. He got back to me on it, um, just wanted to share his findings real quick. Um, he gave me it for the last ten years, uh, oh nine through twenty-eleven, uh, we gave nothing back to the community or, um. To some of the county, the county programs like Pinellas County Homeless Board, that's the homeless leadership board, that sort of thing. Uh, twenty-twelve to twenty-fourteen, we gave ten thousand dollars. Twenty-fifteen, we gave seventy-one thousand dollars, but that's because it includes the incentive. Grants, the facade grants we talked about earlier. Uh, twenty-sixteen, we gave ten thousand. Twenty-seventeen, we gave eleven thousand. Twenty-eighteen, we gave eighteen thousand. Uh, and then this past year, we're back to ten thousand. Um, so I, I just wanted to highlight that a lot of other cities make this, uh, a priority. So keep in mind, I'm not, I'm not saying this is apples to apples because I know all the budgets are different. Um, but Dunedin, um, they give twenty-nineteen budgeted over two hundred thousand dollars in aids to private organizations. Um, Pinellas Park gave twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're a little bit closer towards them. Uh, and Clearwater, again, of course, not apples to apples, but they gave over five hundred thousand dollars. So I just want to make the point that a lot of cities do make this, uh, a priority and it's just part of the community buy-in. I know we pride ourselves on being a full-service city because, you know, we can serve our community the best because we know them and. Um, I, this is just something, you know, near and dear to me that I think we can be doing a better job of. Um, we're gonna have opportunities here in the near future, um, to do a better job of. But the, I, I believe that the money is there, um, just to increase it by, you know, a few, a few thousand dollars here and there. Uh, just to, to buy back into our community and support our community in the ways that other cities support theirs. Um, so I, I think we're gonna have some opportunities in the future, uh, to do so, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that other cities are also making this a priority. And it's, it's not like we're an outlier.
Permission, is that related to the, uh, item that you have on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting?
Uh, it, it is. I guess the message is, um, because the agenda or the agenda for tomorrow does include the junior spunders. Football, which, which I put on there. I've talked to, um, Mark about it, um, just, just this past week. And actually, Mr. City Manager, if you want to just give us a little bit of history about kind of our involvement, our donations to that organization. Um, if you think that might be, might be a good time to do it.
Um, we have been involved in the past, especially, um, with the police department and cops and kids. When we were able to use. Drug confiscated money for that, we used to fund them about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And what they're specifically funded for was for scholarships for the kids who didn't afford. So we have a history that unfortunately the federal government changed their criteria and told us we could not use that anymore. It kind of went a bit. Um, we have had some cases in that list that you got where we had some donation money. Um, from people in the thing that we, we've given them, I think, two thousand and one thousand sporadically on there, but. The city does have a history, whether it's in the police department cops and kids program. Or, or within the budget of, of assisting because of all the different sports leagues that you deal with, that's the one was. Where the most difficulty of kids who can't afford to be involved in the league and we have had a history of helping them. Which is kind of in line with the issue that we'll be talking about and we can go in a little further tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had. I, I just wanted to kind of touch on it before we finished up tonight, just that, um, you know, our, our grants and aid bu- budget can be increased. Um, very easily so. Um, but yeah, if you, if you have any questions specifically as to the item, we can get to it tomorrow night, all more details for you. But I just, I just wanted to touch on it and, and mention how, you know, our surrounding cities make it a priority as well.
And just the other thing, so we can prepare for the third budget meeting and stuff. You see what we've got up there. We've already got a list of some things that we've seen, we'd like put back into the, possibly put back into budget in some way. There is some of that available. Um, again, what we talk about tomorrow night with the grant that may be ten thousand, that'll be, that'll be on the list to bring back. Um, what I'll probably do, the third one is bring a list of all those things you thought about putting back and then you decided from there. Are there any more that we haven't talked about tonight? So I compiled a list. Again, there may be some budget adjustments. We may get some other good news. The workman's comp was, was probably the best news we got because that. Pretty much financed your millage rate drop, uh, that, that kind of made up for that. That was a extreme surprise. We know we've been trying to do good in the workman's comp area and stuff. I don't know if it's the luck of the draw or not, but we never expected to have such a good report, a good year and that money was, was not expected. That helped fund a lot of the things, but is there anything, again, immediate budget wise for this budget here that we have to look at? Um, besides the thing mentioned, I have on the list, the ten thousand that we're going to talk about tomorrow night. Is there anything else we are looking at, um, specifically from the commission aspect to look in when we're looking at the pot of money we got and what? We might want to do with that pot of money there to add into this budget. Like I said, the budget is dynamic, it goes the whole year, so that doesn't mean something can be changed, something can be added and subtracted. In October, November, December, throughout the year, if we come up with something, need to go in the budget and change some priorities, but just so we can. Finish our outline and our final budgets. Is there anything else to add as we bring back?
And the river green. River green.
Rec money, we can do, yeah, that, that, that'll be in, in our rec event money.
Yeah.
I don't think it's expensive.
No.
Okay.
Well, any other comments? Well, that concludes the budget work session. It's adjourned at nine fifty PM. Good night, everybody.